The Monday, February 8th meeting at the Custom Middle School Community Room. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agnew?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Har?
Here.
Mr. Hetza?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Deb, do we have any citizens input?
We do.
What's the order? First, the talk tonight will go with Colin Dias.
Thank you. Just for the record, Colin Dias, 560 Ray Street. Hello, members of the school committee. I am speaking before you today because I am quite ashamed of the lack of transparency that has recently been in the school committee. I just want to say for the record, addressing the school committee is a right. It is not a privilege, and it is a right. And as a citizen and as a resident of the city, I am appalled that the school committee is behaving the way it is. I do want to say, I thought we moved past political retaliation at the city. Even in previous years, when we had our former mayor, he allowed me to speak freely as citizen's input, even when I asked for him to resign. The recent citizen's input I submitted to a recent subcommittee didn't even address the elephant in the room. I didn't say anything worthy of my citizen's input being thrown out, being called out of order. I don't know why the school committee would think it's legal to disperse out any citizen's input at will. And let it be said, I will not allow my freedoms to be interfered by this committee again. Thank you very much.
Next person up, Rebecca Cusick, also a resident in Fall River.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm just hoping to publicly correct some of the misconceptions that are floating around in the community about our schools. Normally, I ignore misinformation with the hope that most people will just dismiss it, but lately, the hostile rhetoric that's being directed at educators is having a negative impact on the morale of my members. I'm sure you know what I'm talking about and that you've experienced this type of thing yourself. I completely understand why the issue of schooling during COVID is fraught with emotion. We're all frustrated by the limitations of the hybrid model and the remote model. We totally empathize with the struggles of parents who are trying to balance work responsibilities with helping their children with school, and we empathize with parents who are hesitant to send their child to school in person. We want nothing more than to be in person with our kids full-time. That said, some of the misrepresentations out there are way off-base. The first is that educators work only a couple of hours a day. The fact is, everyone's working their regular hours from the school buildings, even if students are not in person. Cohort A teachers have actually been in person all along. The hours that we put in extend well into the evenings and the weekends as we plan engaging instruction using brand-new technology. The effort and the creativity on the part of every person in this district should be a source of pride, not open to disparaging remarks. And I would welcome anyone who doubts this to shadow a teacher for one day. The next fact that I want to share is that the union is not responsible for the fact that the schools are not open full-time. I'm not sure that the public understands cohort B students are learning exclusively at home because their parents had the right to select that option as a learning model, not because of the union. Despite the rumors, we have never refused to appear in person. We have never bullied the school committee or the administration into a current learning posture. And while you have remained open to our input, we do not make the final decision. There is one reason and one reason only that our schools are not open full-time, and that is the virus. Since the start of the pandemic, we have remained flexible and responsive to the needs of the district. We continue to bargain agreements that address constantly changing rules by DESI. And while we haven't agreed on everything, in this district, we have collaborated with earnest, good faith around our shared interests. And as a matter of fact, you'll be voting on some of those agreements tonight in executive session. We've also fulfilled our obligation to advocate for the health and safety of our members. In most professions, that sort of advocacy is applauded. The difference is that as educators, our profession has included historic, unspoken expectations of sacrifice. Additionally, what we do in school impacts everything else in society, leading to more Monday morning quarterbacking. I hope that the silver lining in all of this is that when this is over, society will better value the institution of public education. I'm asking everybody at home watching this to understand, the struggle is real for all of us. The only enemy here is the virus. We would be better off focusing our energy on advocating for what we need to return to normal: testing, vaccines, full funding of the Student Opportunity Act. And in the meantime, let's all take heart and remain positive and find hope, because we are turning a corner towards brighter days ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. One last piece of citizens' input is a letter. Deb, would you please read the letter?
It's from Sarah Rodrick and David Millstone on behalf of the Fall River Confronting Discrimination Committee. Dear Mayor Coogan, Superintendent Malone, and members of the school committee, on behalf of the Fall River Confronting Discrimination Committee, a group of concerned community leaders and members focused on social justice issues, we are deeply concerned by the recent actions and the decisions of the school committee pertaining to complaints levied against Superintendent Malone. After hearing concerns alleging that Dr. Malone engaged in incidents involving sexual harassment, gender discrimination, harassment, ageist comments, and speech directed towards disabled individual, it is our understanding that the school committee directed an external-
No, she's not reading yellow. Deb, not reading yellow. Tell you don't read the yellow.
I'm not reading the yellow.
Okay. I told her. Sorry, Deb. Go ahead. I apologize.
It is our understanding that the school committee directed an external investigation into these matters. It is further our understanding that after receiving the external investigation report, the school committee responded by reducing Dr. Malone's pay by one month and informing him that further such actions may result in his termination. It is also our understanding that during the CPAC meeting held on February 1st, 2021, Dr. Malone indicated that he would heed the suggestion to establish a diversity and inclusion task force that will assist leadership in developing and implementing strategic initiatives that promote diversity while dismantling ableism, racism, sexism, genderism, heterosexism, classism, cis-ism, and other forms of discrimination. We understand that a committee already exists within the Fall River School Department comprised of teachers, paraprofessional- paraprofessionals, and administrators. Glaringly missing from this group, however, are some of the very people it serves: students, parents, and external members of the Fall River community. Consistent diversity training for all members of our school community is necessary to lay the foundation for equity in the Fall River school system. With this in mind, we respectfully ask the following: By what date can the Fall River community expect to learn that the diversity and inclusion task force will be established and charge of developing specific and measurable goals? And two, by what date can the Fall River community expect to learn that an educational training, diversity, and inclusion requirement for all constituents of the Fall River Schools community has been established, including a listing of the first session, presenters, facilitators, and expected outcomes? Our committee wishes to express our willingness to be part of these solutions. We are all hopeful that we can use this recent negative activity to spur positive change and create the safe inclusion, respectful, and dynamic educational culture Fall River students and families greatly deserve. Sincerely.
Thanks, Deb. Next item, recognition awards. There are none tonight. Superintendent's report, Dr. Malone.
So, I've given the entire committee our capital improvement presentation, which is a very detailed and lengthy document. It's under the superintendent's report in your packet. Ken actually spoke about this at the subcommittee meeting last week. I'm proud to announce that we have spent over $5 million in the last four years of school monies to support and further capital investments in the Fall River Public Schools. So we're being very strategic, we're being very measured, and we're also being very aggressive in how we are looking at all of our buildings and having a solid, sound plan for their upkeep and their improvement. Ken Pacheco and his team have been outstanding. I think the relationships across the city and with our maintenance staff have been greatly influenced as a result of Ken's leadership, and I'm very excited about the next phase of our capital projects. Of course, the most special of those is the completion or the construction and continual construction and completion of the new Durfee High School. With that, we also have two other major MSBA programs that were completed or completing as we speak, and we completed TANZI last year. So this is an exciting time for our buildings. We'll continue to invest monies when we have that ability and continue to work with the subcommittee of the school committee for facilities and operations, which has been a great group to engage with. So with that, if there are any questions about that specific information?
Next part, please.
Okay. So, as you know, we were all set to return today to the full hybrid in grades K through five, but the snowstorm last night led us to have a snow day today. So tomorrow, we return K to five with cohort C students. They'll be joining our cohort A students across all grades pre-K to 12. We're going to have cohort C in school this week, then we'll have vacation. The week that follows, we'll have cohort D K to five, and then the following week after that, March 1st, we'll then we'll increase it to include the middle schools 6 through 8. And then we'll have two weeks of that. At that point, I'll be looking at making some sort of decisions right now. At 9:12, right now, they will stay remote. Remote is working at that grade level, and as I said, I'll make some decisions at that time. So this is a slow rollout of getting us back. I can't say enough about our teacher union, our other labor unions as well, but particularly, we just had President Cusick speak. We've worked very closely with them. I think that the agreements that we've come to are models for the rest of the Commonwealth. We've been able to be safe. We've been able to remain in person. We've never shut down for longer than a day or so. We've always stayed in the, at least, the modified hybrid, serving about 1,400 kids a day. And I'm excited about looking at the rest of the spring as the vaccine rolls out, the rates continue to come down, the possibility of looking at, you know, right now, we're at six feet. Do we reduce to three feet? Do we look at Wednesdays as a potential coming back on Wednesdays rather than being remote? Those are all things that we'll continue to talk about with the committee and with the labor unions, because our MOU is a living document. So I'm excited about tomorrow. Granted, we have more snow coming in tomorrow. It's going to be snowy after about 10:00 in the morning, and it's going to be, we'll probably get one and a half, maybe two inches, and it converts to rain, and it's going to be slushy. So during tomorrow's commute, I want to warn you right now, people at home, that it's, you know, take your time, and I know you'll be, you know, but it's winter in New England, so we all did it, we got to get through it. So with that, I'm excited about the return, and I look forward to updating you at our next meeting as to what the feedback is. So far, from parents, they're very excited about coming back. A lot of information, though, still to come in March, once we start understanding our space issues, given the 6:40, if we go to 3:00, can we get more kids back, et cetera. Are there any questions?
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Superintendent, do you know, we're going into Phase 2 for, you know, for the COVID-19 vaccines, and in Phase 2, the teachers are in Phase 2. Have we started to plan the Phase 2 for the teachers as far as what, like, how will it be set up where they're going to be, vaccines are going to be, are they going to the schools? Are the teachers going to be on their own to get their own vaccines?
So we're in discussions for, to, you know, we're volunteers, if we want to use our sites, that we will use sites to be able to do that. Other than that, the state's running it. We, I've told the state that, the folks that I've talked to and the Board of Health here locally and the mayor, that we're willing to do whatever works best for the city, open facilities in terms of doing it that way. You know, we, I think, and we've proven to be ready and willing and able to be a teammate on any of the COVID-related issues. So if that's something we can do, that's what the rollout will include.
And, you know, oh, go ahead. I just want to tell you, we had conversations with the Lieutenant Governor's Office, always, always, always about trying to get more vaccines into the city. Josh's crew with the EMS and the fire department have been manning our site at BCC, but it's a limited number of vaccines, and we do the best we can. I've asked the Lieutenant Governor if we could have an education day in Fall River where Catholic charter and our public school students, I mean, our public school teachers all get vaccinated in one, maybe two days, but it's about step three or four down on Phase 2, and right now, we do not have the vaccinations to do it. I impressed on her today that we now had the minus 90 or 90 degree below freezers at BCC. So we have a site that can accommodate crowds like that. And if, again, as Superintendent Malone said, he's more than one I know to open a gym, open whatever we can to get more spaces and get it done. We just need the vaccines, Paul, and as soon as we get them and as soon as we're at that point in the phases, would love to have everybody done at once. It'd be great.
Yeah, no, I just, and I brought that up only because I got an email from MASC, Glenn Kutter, and he attached a letter, a resolution from the Framingham School Committee that's talking specifically about that. So that's why I brought it up today, and I think that's good, Mayor, and what the superintendent said, as far as, you know, maybe organizing something like that, if it's, if it all is possible. Because I think that'll, you know, alleviate a lot of the concerns that parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, and the teachers, students have for going back to school. So I just wanted to make sure I brought that up with you, and I'm glad that you said that. The other thing, too, is, and I know this would be completely, you know, up to the parents or the students, but they also talked about there's certain vaccines from Pfizer and Moderna that 16-year-olds and older are also eligible to have that. Is that something, too, that if the parents agree to it, is that something that they'll, that we consider as well?
Yeah, I mean, we're working with the, again, I don't make the decisions on vaccines, but we're working very closely with the-
I know you don't. I know you don't, but I'm saying-
With the DPH and the state, and we'll continue to do that. We'll communicate when, I think the mayor hit the nail on the head when he said it's really a logistical issue right now of surplus. So as soon as we get more vaccines, and like I said, we'll be ready on our end to assist. You know, we did a survey with all of our educators, and it was like 85% said they would do it with the city, so.
Right. No, I just want, I want to bring that up. That's, that's an important factor with, you know, with the teachers, of course.
And to that end, Paul, that age group is low on the priority list-
Right.
-because they don't react to it the same-
Yeah. I only brought it up because in that Framingham letter, it did mention students-
Yep.
-that are 16-year-olds. That's all. Thanks, all right, thank you.
Anything further, guys? Okay. You all set, Dr. Malone? Yep. Student comment, student delegate report. Are our buddies on there tonight?
There.
There's a smiling face, there's two smiling faces. Who's talking first?
Yes, so thank you for having us virtually. So our report is focused on the updates on the student faculty survey. So just to reiterate what we said previously, this report is on the top of the Durfee student government, and we're talking about all the students of Durfee, because we want to hear Dr. Eric Dunham's proposal. Given the times that we're in right now, we want to create a connection with the student body as we're doing the survey. So we know that this year has been anything but normal for us as students, so we wanted to hear about them, the students, and the teachers of Durfee, to make sure that all the students have the best possible student life, given the virtual transition. So the student survey, which is known to work, has been divided into five different sections to tackle all the lenses of the educational spectrum, such as general involvement, representation, communication and support, and safety and comfort. So something that is also in the works currently and communicating with administration and revision for the first draft, we've also decided to be committed to perform, which is what we're moving forward.
Thank you. Next.
So, after further consideration, we decided that a teaching form is also a great idea. We think that it also deserves to be a part of all the forms created in the community between students.
I know. Is something wrong with your mic? Sorry. I'm sorry. Is something wrong with your mic?
Me? It, I'm not hearing anything.
Oh, that's better.
That's better. Whatever you just did, it sounds better.
Okay, awesome. All right, so we're moving forward to create connection and unity. Is it doing it again?
Yeah, it comes and goes.
That's weird.
Go ahead, keep going.
All right. So this past year's conference, that we need to open, so the government wants to hear from both the teachers and the students, so we can break trust and appearance from both of them. So currently, we are working for all grade levels, seniors, so in starting to reach their base, and we plan to have that problem.
Okay. Anything else, guys? Thank you.
No, that's, next month, we plan to fix the results. So we're planning to-
Next month, yeah. Next month, we'll have the sound fixed.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, if I could, if I could.
I'm sorry, go ahead, me me.
Hi, guys. Is there any chance that, we really couldn't hear you. Is there any chance that you guys could email us your information so we can go over it and maybe we can correspond that way? We do respect your time and your efforts, so maybe that could help.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Kev?
This time, the last month's report, and if I missed it, I apologize, but I recall asking at the last meeting for an explanation as to, I wondered if the student representative talked about never seeing his teacher the whole year, or something in person, and I don't recall getting anything on that. Did they have an explanation on that? I know I asked at that public meeting and I don't think the government-
I believe we sent you something in the Friday email, but I'll have a-
And I apologize if I did, but I just-
Yeah, no, I believe we sent it in the Friday email, but I'll have.
This points, gee, that's just mad. Yeah, we did mail that to the school committee. You didn't get it?
I don't believe I did, but-
Oh, we sent it to you.
Yeah, a quick, just an explanation of what's certain type of files.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. I didn't hear the question, I was in the other room.
The young man with the baseball cap said he hadn't seen his teacher. I think you might have even told me about that, but it was Committee McKeven, Aggie, that asked the question.
Sure, sure. So this was a situation relevant to our AP Statistics sections. Just before we opened, our AP Stats teacher informed us he was taking a leave for the year. That's a specialized training capacity to teach the course at the AP level, only fell with one person, Mr. Sakel, the dean. We offered the three sections of kids options. Some chose some of the options, where they went into AP Calculus, or they went into AP Computer Science, or they, some of them took AP Stats over at BCC. Came down to 40 students that decided to sign up for the AP Edgenuity course with support from Mr. Sakel. So I think when Mr. Kane said he never saw his teacher, he was right, he never saw the teacher that took the leave of absence.
So Mr. Sakel would have been the one to answer some questions of current work and stuff like that?
Mr. Sakel, yeah, Mr. Sakel makes himself available to the students. He sees them regularly after school hours, on the weekends, so he, they, he is accessible to the students.
I just think it may, to me, is the education of that answer, I think, is valid. I understand things happen, but we want to make sure we clarify what they are. In general, I think most people would see this student, there's a requirement that you see a student at some point other than the case like this. And I didn't want to figure out that, we wonder, is that happening across the board? I appreciate your explanation.
Sure. Okay.
Thanks. Thanks, guys. We'll talk to you later. Send those emails, we appreciate it. Next item up on the agenda is we have some minutes. I asked for a motion to-
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
We have to do those individually, Mark? Each one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So let's go first with the Finance Committee meeting of 12/21. I'll have a motion to approve. I have a motion and a second on that one. Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetza?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next is a motion to approve the regular school committee meeting from 12/23. I have a motion, 12/21, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetza?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. And finally, we have the regular school committee on 1/11. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Deb, please.
Mr. Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetza?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Yes, I'm sorry, Kev, go ahead.
I apologize. I meant to ask this question at the citizen input time, when it was a discussion about something in yellow versus something, whatever, like, on the thing. My question is, is do, if, if I put my, if somebody puts a letter in and then it's not allowed to be read for a certain reason with policies and this and that, do they get a response from the school committee to say why and with the backup?
Attorney Assad?
Well, let me just, let me address the yellow portion.
Sure.
That is redacted. There are certain statements in there that, when reviewed, conflict with the policy of the, of the school committee. And as a result, we yellow that without, without affecting the other portions of the, of the letter. With respect to contacting the individual, I could tell you, I have not contacted the individual. I have not talked to the individual.
Yeah. I would just, personally, I would like to ask that we send a notice to individuals if we did not read the letter in its entirety or for whatever reason, and it can be entirely legitimate reasons, I'm not suggesting otherwise, just that, you know, we should give a response to the people to say why we didn't read certain sections of that. Like, if, I quite frankly, don't remember what was taken out of that, I'd have to go back and, and listen to it, but if we can either get a copy to us of what was yellowed out, as well as a response to the individuals, I think there's only probably one or two per month, but I think that, in just being upfront, I think that would be, make sense. So I don't know if that has to be in the form of a motion, or it can be your friendly request, or, it's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
I know that Colin was here, and I was pretty sure that it was only a small paragraph we took out, so I'm pretty sure the authors know what was left out was only a part that would have been inflammatory or would it be a personal attack. And again, I don't know that that's necessary, since they have the complete letter, they know what they meant. I don't believe, from what I saw with Attorney Assad before the meeting, that any content was changed, that changed their message. So I don't believe, I don't know what that would do. I mean, again, she's got the letter.
Well, I think what it does, I think what it does is it at least acknowledges why, and it'll tell a copy of the policy, you know, whatever the policies are related to offer a friendly, uh, a friendly letter to be sent, you know, and, uh, to those individuals that might have a comment, whether it's good, bad, or if it's something that can't be said, the reason why.
Well, let me, let me think about it, Kev, if you don't mind, I mean, it's not the worst thing I've heard, but it's also, I just don't want to get twenty-five letters and then we're responding all week to people because they put a name in of an individual, we got to tell them the name they took out, and it could get a little unwieldy, so I'm just trying to be...
Yeah, maybe you could work with Attorney Assad to see if we could come up with a resolution on it. Thank you.
Yeah, or we send out a copy of what's allowed and not allowed before we get the letters, would probably be a better way to do it.
Whatever it is, I think just something would help us to address it, thank you.
Acceptance of donations, um, Superintendent, uh, hold on, a motion to accept donations, in a second, please?
Oh, no, motion to accept.
Second.
I got a motion and a second, um, we're going to have Dr. Malone explain them, any discussion? Call the roll, please, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Obeying.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Uh, Superintendent, please?
Sure. The donation from the Fall River Public Library to Durfee High School, fourteen thousand dollars. From Baycoast Bank to Durfee High School Athletics, two thousand, uh, two thousand fifteen dollars and sixty-four cents. From Alliance Energy LLC to Durfee High School, five hundred dollars. From Donors Choose to Stone School, three hundred fifty-eight dollars. From Donors Choose to Stone School, three hundred forty-eight dollars. From Sec Zeta to the Green Elementary School, one hundred dollars. From NORC at the University of Chicago to our Early Childhood Department, a thirty-dollar Amazon gift card. And finally, from a parent of a Fall River Public School student to the Early Childhood Special Education Department, a Leckie stander and Kid Walk gate trainer. We thank our partners for their philanthropic support.
Thank you.
Question?
Kev?
Just on the, uh, Donors Choose, uh, so, it, do we have a policy that before somebody does that, they have to get permission from Superintendent first? No?
We do not.
I think that's just something to look at, um, thankfully, we've been fortunate with our budgets to be pretty, uh, much able to submit to whatever we need to, but I think we need to have, um, a policy looked at to say, well, what are they asking for? And I know in the past, when we had no money in this district, it was, people would ask for pencils and, you know, things that are basic, you know, you needed for school, and we provided them, and there was always a back and forth, but I wonder if we should look at a, in the future meetings, a policy on, um, I thought we had one that we have to ask ahead of time? For instance, if somebody did a, what I'm, in my head recalling was, I think somebody wanted to do, like, Donors Choose for an iPad, or some kind of, uh, device, but it wasn't the devices that we used, so then they ended up, when they donated it, it was not usable because it wasn't what we would use them, so, uh, if we could just take a peek at that, I think it's something to look at before we start asking for donations for stuff that we might not approve. Thank you.
Okay. Number nine is approval of contracts. Oh, you have them in front of you, uh, unless someone points out one they're concerned about. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Motion to approve all contracts.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Mimi.
Discussion, Mr. Chairman?
Discussion, which one would you like to talk about, Tom? Uh, should we, I think we should vote for, oh, no, go ahead.
We'll vote first?
Yeah, go ahead, no, go ahead, you're right, because we don't, you might not do it.
Okay, and the second item on the traverse landscape, yeah, that's, 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 uh, that's a heady bill there to get a, to get a schematic on. Is there any chance that when a schematic is completed, that it can be, it could be, we could see it? We can see a design on it?
That's what it is, Tom.
Yeah, so are we going to be able to see the thing?
Yes.
You know, because, um, I have to, I have to say that, um, I'm, I'm excited about the upcoming renovation of the fields, I'm a little bit concerned about the wet, the wetlands in that district, and I hope that, you know, this helps to address some of the wetlands issues, but also, I'm still a little bit put off by the fact that we're not going to have a proper baseball field, you know, so I, I just want to have that oversight and make sure that we have a chance to check this out.
Okay. Anything further, guys?
I yield.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number ten is an approval of grants, we have none tonight, so we'll jump to item number eleven. The first, the first is an interview with Ms. Sharice Taylor. It's an applicant for the Assistant Superintendent Schools, um, is it on Zoom?
Coming, yes. May I?
Go ahead.
Uh, so tonight, I'm very excited to bring forward the, uh, recommended finalist for the position of Assistant Superintendent. That person, uh, is Dr. Sharice Taylor. Uh, she's spent a few days here already, uh, is a meet and greet to, to, uh, get a feel for the district, so some of you, uh, may have met her then, others I know were on the, uh, search team. Uh, so this search process, uh, was led by Assistant Superintendent Loesch. We formed a search committee, uh, we posted, we reviewed applicants, uh, applicants were brought in for interviews, uh, interviews were conducted, uh, background checks were made, uh, finalist candidates were brought forward, uh, more background checks were conducted, interviews were held with myself and the candidates, uh, more calls, more due diligence, uh, to, uh, prior employers, to, uh, current employers, to, uh, folks in academia and others that, uh, work with these candidates. Throughout the process, we had two leading candidates, uh, both of which I think were very strong, uh, one of which I've worked with, uh, known for over, uh, known for about twenty years. But this candidate, uh, Dr. Taylor, uh, rose to the top, uh, in my opinion, uh, in the opinion of others, feedback that I was receiving, and one of the reasons, uh, was because of her, um, style, her skillset, her attitude, uh, and her ability to engage with people. And I think that that is one of the things that is a trademark for someone, uh, coming to join, uh, an organization, can they fit in, can they make, uh, uh, the move to, uh, uh, an organization that's already existing and running? Uh, and what I've found with Dr. Taylor, uh, through the process is that, A, she likes to roll up her sleeves, she really enjoys people, uh, and she's got a way about her that, uh, is, is, is both, uh, uh, both the blending of academia and personality. And I think that, uh, her background and experiences, uh, uh, directly impact her ability to be the right person for this role at this time, uh, here in the city of Fall River. She's been currently working, uh, delivering professional development, working with organizations while she completed her doctorate at Harvard, uh, she has an undergraduate degree, uh, from Smith, uh, uh, she has a master's degree from Columbia, uh, and, and I'm very excited, and she's joining us here live, uh, she is in, uh, South Carolina right now, uh, but she will be coming here, she lives in Quincy, uh, she's spent, as I said, a couple of great days here with me, uh, she's as excited about, uh, Fall River as I am in terms of, uh, this city and, 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 and how great the people have been and all the cool stuff that we have here and how this is a gem, so with further ado, I'll turn over to the committee. I'm bringing forward her candidacy to you for formal recommendation, uh, to approve, uh, for hire and, and then, uh, begin the process with, uh, uh, contracting from there.
Do you want a contract tonight, too?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, uh, anybody get any questions? I do, where are you in South Carolina?
I'm in Charleston.
Oh, very nice. I used to live in South Carolina when I was a kid.
Oh, nice. I'm in the, I'm currently in the Somerville area.
Oh, very nice, very nice, big football country out there for high schools, right?
Absolutely.
And I, I, I got to tell you, I haven't, didn't have the pleasure, as some of the other guys did, of hearing the interviews, but, um, you got great academic schools on your resume, uh, three of them I could never get into, so I have to commend you for that, um, because, uh, those are all top shelf universities for education, and, uh, and you got a wide range of experience, so, uh, I'm sure, uh, the committee did a good job of vetting you and, uh, and the recommendation was approved by the superintendent, so hopefully, uh, they're smooth sailing and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Taylor.
Hi.
Certainly a pleasure to be able to address you tonight. I had a chance to meet you personally, and I was very impressed with your personality. I was impressed with your open attitude on trying to embrace a brand-new place for yourself, Fall River, and, um, we had a discussion about culture, ethnic culture, diversity, and I know that that's going to be like, we're going to grow in leaps and bounds with this, and I'm looking forward to the work at hand, I'm very much looking forward to the discussions that will take place in regard to our culture and our, our society here in Fall River, our weaknesses, our faults, but also our strengths. So, welcome aboard, I wish you all the best, I know that this is the honeymoon period and everybody's smiling right now, but I'm looking forward to digging in the trenches and getting the hard work done. Thank you, with that, I yield.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Dr. Taylor, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
I'm well, thank you, and so, you know, I won't get into the resume, it speaks for itself, it's very impressive, um, certainly, having gone through the interview process and been vetted by, uh, the, uh, interview committee, um, certainly, uh, you exited that very well, and so I won't get into all of the specifics in your resume, again, I think it's, um, impressive and I think it certainly speaks for itself. I, I guess, just two questions, so I guess the first one, and you, they may have asked you this already, but why Fall River? What was it about Fall River, about our demographics, about our population, our students, that when you were looking over the job post and you said, "That's a place I need to work"?
So, for, I've been in Massachusetts now, uh, this round, for about three and a half years, and I have to say, of all the places that I have interviewed, Fall River was the only place where I instantly felt community. It felt like a two-way process from start to finish, just as much as I was selling myself to this committee, I felt like people were not just trying to learn about what I could do and give, but learning about who I was, and I appreciated, I come to every situation with a level of curiosity, um, it's kind of like trade of a social worker, it's just what we do, um, and so people were extremely open with me. Uh, I had an opportunity just to meet so many different people, um, the diversity is extremely important to me, like many people in Fall River, I am also the daughter of immigrants, and so that population, working with newly, new arrivals, um, working with students from low-income backgrounds, just resonates with who I am, and of all the places that I interviewed, it seemed like Fall River not only had the same kind of curiosity that I had, but also had the appetite for change. And, you know, for me, it's as long as we have a coalition of the willing, I think that we can move mountains, and this was the only place where I felt that was possible.
Thank you, um, and if I may, Mr. Chairman, just one more? All right, it's going to limit me to two, so...
No, you said two.
So, I, I guess, if you, in, in that, thank you for your, for your answer, but can you tell us a little bit about, what are you looking to accomplish in, in your role, uh, here in Fall River, if the committee does decide to move and, and adopt the recommendation of the superintendent for your appointment? What, what's on your radar, what's sort of priority number one, once you get your feet under you? I mean, obviously, there's going to be a, a transition period for you to get acclimated to the district, but, you know, what's, what's at, what's at the top of the list for you for Fall River?
I think once I'm done with entry planning, um, you know, and as you said, I've gotten my sea legs under me, the goal, I think, really is to build a strong MTSI system, and I'm thinking about it in terms of not just the social, emotional learning and the instruction, but also thinking about, you know, the general framework, which looks at school leadership, which looks at family and community engagement, you know, how are we connecting all of the dots? Um, and that was one of the appeals of this position, that integration is in the title, and so, I'm looking forward to jumping right into that.
Thank you very much, now, since the mayor only gave me two questions, I'll yield back to them, thank you. Pleasure meeting you.
Play, pay close attention, Dr. Taylor, pay close attention. Mimi?
Hi, Dr. Taylor, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Very well. Um, I was one of the lucky ones to meet you, um, and I'm very happy with, uh, that day, uh, we had a very good conversation, and I can't wait, uh, to see you work in this district, and, um, your enthusiasm is what got me the day we, we walked around and we chatted for a good hour. Um, SEL is very important to me and the youth that we serve in this district, and, uh, just the conversations that we had that day, I can see you're going to be, uh, pertinent to the improvements that, uh, that I think need to, we, we need to have here in, in our district. We're already doing some great things when it comes to SEL, amazing things, some of our schools are doing some intense stuff with, uh, uh, SEL, but bringing you on board, I think, is just going to be the, the cherry that, uh, what is it, the cherry on the cake, is that it? But anyway, um, welcome, I'm excited, as my colleague, uh, Corey mentioned, I can't wait to be in the trenches with you, um, this is exciting, welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody further, Kev?
So, uh, welcome, and, uh, I want to say, it was a pleasure from, it was a pleasure for me to serve on the, uh, search committee to look at the candidates and, um, try to determine which candidates we were going to move forward, and as the superintendent stated, to, it was very clear to me that you, you came into that top, uh, echelon of that, uh, that search quite quickly, and if I look at your resume, it doesn't necessarily read like a, um, a typical person that works in the school system, you know, you go through, uh, you've taught for a number of years, you're a counselor, you became an assistant principal, principal, your experience was so much more dynamic and different, uh, than that, and I think that's what really made, um, me feel comfortable with pushing you forward to the next level. Uh, I do think that what we need here is someone that's going to be dynamic, uh, look at systems that are in place, create, um, planning and data to integrate all of the nice things that we're doing, and when, when things are not working out, to make sure that you can articulate that to the public and the community and the school committee to make sure we make the proper changes, and, uh, I was really impressed by you, and I think that you're going to be a proper role model for many of our children in this city, both in families in our schools and outside of our schools. I really liked the idea you talked about getting out into the community and going to the churches and playgrounds and anywhere else you've had, uh, I wish we could have taped that interview to show it to the community because you really knocked it out of the park, so I welcome, welcome you, and, uh, we're here to help you in any way that we can, so, congratulations.
Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Taylor.
Josh?
How you doing tonight, Dr. Taylor?
I'm great, how are you?
Great, I just wanted to say hi, I look forward to meeting you once you're here in the district, and, uh, I'm, I'm excited about your enthusiasm, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, hi, Doctor, my name's Paul Hart, um, I haven't met you yet, but I do look forward to meeting with you, uh, your resume is very impressive, and, uh, I can't wait to get to work with you, so thank you very much, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Okay, so, any further questions for the candidate after that bruising interview?
Motion to approve.
Uh, that's my item, next item, I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion to approve, any further questions? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Welcome aboard. Mr. Taylor, we'll see you shortly.
Thank you all so much, I'm excited to get started.
See you in the morning.
Great.
Next item up?
Fantastic.
All right.
Did you, did you want to make a statement or anything, you kind of already did, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just want to thank you all for having faith in me and for really, I think that we are going to be a great match, um, I've already taken upon myself to visit various neighborhoods within Fall River on the weekends, so, you know, I'm just, I'm really excited and grateful for the opportunity, and I'm going to now tell everyone that the Sharice sandwich is named after me.
I've already started that process, Dr. Taylor.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anything further? You're all set. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay. 11.3 is a presentation and discussion on turnaround plans for Green, Henry Lord, Morton, Durfee, as presented by the principals. Do you want to go right in order that you have in there? Who's going to introduce, Sister Superintendent Lawson, she's going to take it from there.
Just two seconds.
Go right ahead, Maria. Thanks.
Good evening. Today, we have four schools that are in the midst of turnaround. We have the principals of Morton Junior High School. We have Henry Lord, Dr. B. We have the newly-appointed principal of Green, Mrs. McKay, and Matt Damaris from Durfee. Each will be coming here to, we know this has not been a typical year, but teaching and learning still remains at the forefront, and each will be coming to update you on the process and where they are and how they're maintaining a focus on teaching and learning. So, we'll begin with Mrs. Patterson from Morton, followed by Dr. B. from Henry Lord, then Mrs. McKay from Green, and finally, Mr. Damaris from Durfee.
Thanks, ma'am.
Good evening. I forget how short I am. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for giving me this time to talk about the work that we've been doing at Morton and the turnaround process. Everything that I refer to today will be on the one pager in front of you. In terms of the timeline, in academic year 18, 19, we worked with a consultant from Teachers 21 to develop a plan and then submitted it. Academic year 19, 20 was the rollout of the plan, and we're currently in year two. In August and September, I met with the instructional leadership team, and we reviewed the plan to determine what we needed to continue and what were our next steps for focus. On the one pager, if you look at the table, it identifies the four turnaround practices and what we decided to continue in the plan. So, the areas of focus are folk on building leadership capacity among the staff, incorporating consistent instructional practices through collaborative lesson planning, and providing tiered support that supports our students both academically and social-emotional needs. We also work to maintain a positive atmosphere that remains focused on staff and student needs. The items below the table represent what is different this year and all alignment of the four practices listed in the table. First, you'll see the two MTSS academies. This is year three for us in literacy and year one in inclusive practices. Literacy is a little bit different this year because they've given us 14 hours of support, which includes whole-staff PD, coaching for the ELA department head, and small-group support by content. What we've decided as a leadership team is that some of the hours will be used to support the Unified Arts and Social Studies with literacy. We're currently in year one of the Inclusive Academy, which only provides three sessions of internal PD. Both academies have monthly professional development that's provided virtually, and it supports the learning of the leaders within the building. For literacy, our leader is the ELA department head, and for inclusive practices, the leader is me. As you know, we have the Verizon Innovative Learning Grant for all middle schools, which helps us personalize learning. We've adjusted the advisory model this year. It went from one hour a week to 30 minutes at the start of each day. We have specific topics this year. On Mondays, we focus on morning meetings, which really just reconnects us with students from the weekend. Tuesdays are used for goal-setting. Wednesday is the Choose Love curriculum, which is utilized across the district. Thursdays, the time is used for transitioning students to high school and exposing them to college and career. And then on Friday, we focus on teaching cultural understanding. Every year, we try to better meet the needs of the students and staff in our sub-separate programming. Our school consists of teams. We have six white teams, six maroon teams. So, this year, we decided to develop a team that consists of three language-based rooms and our social-emotional room. This allows educators to remain in one specific content area and students to move among their classes so they have more of a traditional middle school experience. We have the new Step Up ASD classroom, and the newly-appointed SAC mainly works with this class and the other ASD classrooms. This classroom currently consists of sixth and seventh grade. We also have our first group of foundational students in grade six. In order to support the needs of these students, we run two different PLCs after school that are led by the vice principal and three other staff members. And we also have district support on a regular basis, which includes monthly meetings that connect the grade-six foundational staff with the K through 8L coordinator. At the end of March, we'll meet with Schoolworks. Schoolworks is the company that we've been working with throughout the turnaround process. They did an initial visit in the first year, and it really just developed a baseline for us. And then they had another meeting scheduled last year, which was canceled due to closure. This year, we'll have a visit at the end of March. It will all be done virtually. They'll do virtual meetings with teachers, and they'll also do observations virtually. If you have any questions at this point, I can answer them.
I do. Mimi, then, Tom.
Hi, Cheryl. How are you?
Hi. How are you?
I'm okay. I just have a question on advisory.
Yes.
One, why, why are you switching from once a week to every day, which I'm a big fan of, by the way? I'm glad you're doing that. But was there a needs assessment? You think it was, why are you going to every day?
Well, the middle-school team met right after closure, and we all decided that we would implement that for the three middle schools.
Right.
And it kept us connected to students every day. We wanted to make sure that we just had an additional touch point with them in the mornings.
I love it. What kind of programs are being implemented for the college and career readiness?
So, the guidance councils, the SACs mainly run advisory, but the guidance councils work on the Thursday programming. They're pulling materials. They're having them take, like, assessments on themselves in terms of their learning styles and connecting them to articles about the growth mindset. This will also be a time for high schools to come in and present to them. But it's the first time that they've been asked to do that. They're also developing curriculum through Naviance, and they're starting that with just sixth grade this year.
Also, just a question. What is the Step Up program?
It's an additional autism classroom.
Yes.
So, we have two high-functioning classrooms.
Okay.
And this is just at a different level than the high-functioning rooms.
All right. Thank you.
It's currently just sixth and seventh grade.
Thank you.
Tom?
Yes, I was just curious. That was a great report, Cheryl. As far as the advisory, I want to echo my colleague's comments. I'm really happy to see that goes on every day. When, how's that choose, what's it like in the pandemic with, like, you know, not as many kids in school? Has it affected the climate, the social climate of the school?
Yes, obviously. But the teachers do a really great job in keeping the kids that are in the building connected to the kids that are at home. Part of that happens through advisory. That was one other reason. We knew that there's two teachers in there, so one can log on with the students that are at home, and the other one is logged in with the students that are there, and they connect them that way. We've also tried to develop some activities that provide some normalcy to the building. For example, we have a committee called the Fun Committee, which develops, if we go on vacation or we have a long weekend, we'll do an activity for the last two hours of the day, and we work to include the students that are at home. Like, we have an upcoming scavenger hunt, and they'll both be able to participate.
Another question. When it comes to your discussions on tolerance, teaching tolerance, is it the same, is it led by the same instructor, or are there, are there different people stepping in and talking about that, leading the discussion?
Right now, it's the SACs, and they're reaching out to other schools that have more experience than what we do. There are some great lessons in the responsive classroom curriculum, but they're just beginning to tap into those. They've reached out to Talvet, I know, for some resources.
I'm hoping when school returns, you know, when more kids are in school, rather than out, I hope that's sooner than later, that that topic, you know, that area would be widely discussed, especially in light of what's been going on all over America, you know, all year long and stuff. It's great for the kids to try to understand that and build their feelings at that early age. One more question. How's that new SAC working out? Is it helping?
She's wonderful. And this year, we've been able to have her just focus on the ASD classrooms, so she gets a better understanding, and we can meet the needs. And she works closely with the BCBA, John Kennedy, who comes into the building.
Great. So, it's all good. Thank you very much. I yield.
It is. Thank you.
Kevin?
Thank you. Do you have any report on any data, like data for the students where, what it looks like? I know we ran a COVID, but after the three years now, this is the third year of, do you have any data, ANET data, any assessment data? Are the trends looking up? Are they looking flat? Are they looking?
Somewhere in the middle. So, in terms of ANET data, when we, last year was the first year that we were involved with ANET, so that was our baseline. In comparison to last year, we've seen growth in ELA in all three content areas, if you compare the first cycle of data. In mathematics, we've seen growth in grade six. If you compare us to the district or the network, as they refer to it, in ELA, in two-grade levels, sixth and seventh, we beat the district. In mathematics, we beat the district in grade six.
Yeah, I just, that's important to me, you know, when we look at these. And I know you probably have it, but it's always, looking at the data is an important piece for me as we go, to see if we're making the gains, what do we need, and where we're coming from. And we're in turnaround for a reason, so we would like to see, are we getting out of the, you know, out of that. My last question was just on the operating system Aspen X2. Do you enjoy working with that, or do you have any thoughts on it?
It's complicated. In terms of scheduling, I do a lot with the scheduling. I think there are good points to and bad points. I don't think that we know enough about it in terms of scheduling. So, for me, I would, I'd like to put in a formula and have programs so I don't have to do a lot of the hand scheduling, and I quite, I don't quite know the capacity for that.
Yeah. And somebody helped you with that in the district?
Um, someone helped, yes, to push it through. Drew's been great in supporting us with that.
That's how it ultimately gets done, but could be smoother.
Could be smoother, yeah.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anything further? Thank you, Cheryl Patterson from Morton. I didn't introduce you. My fault.
That's okay. Thank you.
Next up, friend of mine, Dr. Amy Bronhardt from Henry Lord.
Good evening, everybody. Dr. B., proud principal from Henry Lord Community School. A diverse setting of 800 kiddos, which I think is absolutely spectacular, because three years ago, three and a half years ago, when I stepped up to Henry Lord, we had right around 500 kids at Henry Lord. So, we have grown dramatically in the last three years, which I think also speaks to the level of work that we have done at Henry Lord Community School. It can really get me emotionally choked up because our school is a humming institution right now. And although our kids are not in person, we are virtually connecting with them at the rates of 94% attendance we're seeing in our kids for the last month of school, specifically across our school. So, we have not allowed this COVID experience to, it may have separated us physically, but it has not separated us emotionally, socially, and just connected. And I will tell you, that is probably how we have had such success at Lord in the last three years, is because of the relationships that we have with our kids, the relationships and the support that we provide to our teachers, to be able to do the tasks and the work that we are asking them to do, because it is a Herculean effort. And that was before COVID. We all know the effects of COVID, and I don't want to focus on that. Because even within the effects of COVID and prior to our shutdown last year, Henry Lord has been making drastic improvements. Between 2008, we have really focused on our social-emotional learning. We have a multi-tiered system of support. We have a robust Tier One social-emotional network, where we are providing all kids with lots of different opportunities to show their best and be their best. We then have a Tier Two and Tier Three supports for social-emotional kiddos, to make sure that every kid is getting what they need. Because when we address the social-emotional needs of kids and teachers, the academics start to get some traction, and that's what we've noticed. Last year, MCAS between 2018 and 2019, Henry Lord went from the sixth percentile to the 10th percentile. And at that time, we technically jumped to the 12th, but then everybody in the state had to clean up the errors in their data, and it pushed us back to the 10th. So, we were, like, on fire last year, working to get out of turnaround, because as we know, everything from 10% and below is considered turnaround. We are at the 10th percentile. Last year, our ANET data in 2019 going into 2020, at this point last year, we were seeing, out of the sixth grades that take MCAS, we were leading the charge in four of those grades on ELA and math, with double digits of improvement. So, we were slotted to be coming out of turnaround last year, and we knew that MCAS was going to be our celebration and our opportunity to show how much our kids had grown, because that's really what it's about. Our access and our English-language learners as well, they continue to grow. And last year, in particular, we put a school-wide writing goal into place, and we saw major gains with 40% of our kids in grades K and grades one through eight meeting their targets in writing and speaking specifically. So, we have continued that writing and speaking goal this year. We just offered some professional development now that we are well into COVID and well into the technology, to really leverage all the tech tools that the district has to really be engaging with kids and having them show what they're thinking and what they're learning, learning about. In math, we continue to work alongside with the curriculums, and particularly in our middle school right now, where if you follow the trajectory of Henry Lord, that's where our most struggling learners are, is in the middle school, because those were our babies that were with us during our early and struggling years when Henry Lord reopened. So, we continue to work with our teachers on individual data points with all different kids and really looking for professional development, leveraging the resources within the district, and also taking part with the Department of Education with some of the MTSS academies that we've been able to get access to. So, whether it's been professional development in math or entering into the literacy academy, because we are a member of the literacy academy, we are also a member of the SEL PBIS committee, where the bulldog bucks are reining hard at Lord, and kids are working hard for safe, responsible, and respectful behaviors. And we celebrate a lot. So, there's a lot of things that kids are earning their bucks for so that we can celebrate and get good competitions running in all of our grades, whether it's RAS kids or ST math, but everyone loves a good competition in Fall River, and our kids are no different. So, we continue to try to motivate them, leveraging, working with Kevin Almeida, with every incentive we can possibly think of to support the kids, and trying to think outside the box to keep everybody coming back day in and day out. In addition to that, as we looked, similar way to Cheryl, you know, we were halfway through the implementation of our turnaround plan last year. So, as we started up this year, it was more about what was working, what did we not get the traction we needed to last year, and what do we need to change to do things a little bit differently. One of our efforts this year that has been alive and strong at Lord is that speaking goal and our school-wide speaking goal, but it's also been about giving our students voice and being able to offer opportunities for student voice to come alive at Henry Lord. And part of our work, we've developed a diversity, equity, and inclusion task force. We have dedicated monthly professional development to the task force. Upwards of about 30 teachers donated their time over the summer to start up with a book study. And from there, we have been working, this past Friday, we had an hour and a half session on LGBTQ youth rights to better understand how we can support our students. In addition to that, we have done some race and gender and identity training with staff, and it has really brought us together as a community. We continue to engage with our families with the benefits and the leveraging of community partners every single day. We've had hosted several parent cafes virtually, and I'm convinced it's the new way of doing business, because families come onboard and they get on with us. We've had two sessions now. We've had over family, over 40 families participate in both of the live sessions. It was really inspiring to see our families come together and be levers of support for one another and really take advantage and find some of the silver linings of the times that we're currently in. So, Henry Lord is rocking and rolling in the South End, looking at data every day, thinking about what we're doing now and how we can better service our kids. But it's an awesome place, and if you haven't been by in a while, I highly recommend you come back, because we also have a large number of kiddos in person every day. Mayor Coogan stops by, and Dr. Malone stops by, but we've got our Cohort A kiddos, because we are the ASD strand in person, and because we also have our foundational three classrooms as well, there's a lot of kiddos that are in person. So, we're excited next, tomorrow to welcome back Cohort C, and then after vacation, D, and then our middle-school kids thereafter. So, we are excited, and we're looking forward to continuing on in the work. So we are excited and we're looking forward to continuing on in the work.
Tom, then Mimi. Go ahead, Tom, you go first this time.
Sounds exciting, Amy. I know that you guys are working it real hard there at the Henry Lord. And, um, I was there last year, I've been a little reluctant to visit due to the conditions now, but maybe soon. I look forward to going back. Couple of things on, on the writing goal, is that a curriculum? Is that implemented at all grade levels and it is, is it a curriculum?
No, it's not a curriculum. It's a school-wide writing goal, looking to increase opportunities for writing and also have a consistent expectation for what good writing looks like. So we've developed rubrics, sharing them with kids so that kids know what's expected of them, but also so that across all grade levels, all kids are knowing what's expected of them. And it doesn't change from fourth grade classroom to fifth grade classroom to sixth grade classroom, right? We want to see that through line, so kids are getting a consistent message about what good writing looks like.
Yeah, that's really important. From a developmental point of view, get a kid to be able to, uh, to properly, uh, you know, uh, spell and, and use proper language, you know, proper words. That's, that's awesome. That's good to know. That, I'd be que, when I visit, I'd, I'd love to s, is that going on every day or the special days for that?
No, that, it's the expectation that kids are writing every day and speaking every day, yep.
Yeah, I'd love to see that in action. And one more thing, uh, the, the MOU with St. Vincent's, how's that?
It's been transformative. One of the things we know in the city is that the individual counseling needs of our kids are paramount when we're looking at tier two and tier three supports, really getting kids what they need. And unfortunately, the need in our city is large and the amount of community providers and just the number of community providers to really be able to support all of our schools equitably is a challenge. And so as a school that looked at its needs and looked at what we needed for kids, we couldn't get, allow our kids to be put on waiting lists for individual therapy. And as we were looking at some of our kiddos that were not successful in eighth grade, particularly two years ago, we noted four of the 10 or four of the, yeah, four of the 10 at the time were supposed to be, were in line, like on a waiting list for a counselor. And it was like, our kids don't have time to be on waiting lists.
I know.
When the need is there, the need is there. And so the partnership with St. Vincent's essentially eliminated the waiting list. And so St. Vincent's and I and my partnership with the whole, my SEL team and St. Vincent's, um, intake team, we developed an MOU, it's a two-week turnaround. And so whenever we make a referral, it's pretty much through St. Vincent's unless a family is requesting an alternative, um, provider other than St. Vincent's. But we've been able to really streamline and get our kids the supports within a two-week turnaround.
Are those St. Vincent's counselors and, uh, or are they using college interns?
No, insurance-based therapists.
All insurance-based.
All insurance-based therapists.
Thanks a lot, Ayew. That's great, thank you. Good work.
Hey, Dr. B.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, thanks.
Thanks for being here. Um, I was fortunate to be able to visit a couple of times last year and was, uh, absolutely amazed by the work that you're doing with your, with your staff as well. Um, it, it's impressive. Uh, I, I have a question on the STEAM with Arizona State, if you could just, uh, talk a little bit about that and how that relationship is going and how it's moving because of COVID and?
So it's been a little bit of a work in progress, but, um, we are really excited to be bringing our kids back in person, um, because part of the STEAM program, which is, was an extension grant through the Verizon Innovative Learning Program. Uh, so Henry Lord, we had a position, but I didn't have a curriculum to put, for the position to support this extended science time on learning. Um, and so we applied for the Arizona State University through Verizon. We were awarded the grant and it's a virtual reality program. Um, so the kids are taken through a series of activities. They attended twice a week, um, and part of the work is developing their own planet and there's all steps along the way. Um, and then within that is a virtual reality experience for kids. And so we're really looking to leverage that piece, because as we know, what we don't know, we don't know. And so by giving kids the opportunity to be exposed to wide worlds that are out there in the virtual reality world, we're really helping build their background knowledge and connect and make different associations and connections that many of our kids just would never have a chance to experience.
Correct.
So when we're talking about, um, you know, A Long Walk to Water, uh, which was a seventh grade novel, my seventh grade teacher took the virtual reality goggles and took the kids to the desert. And the kids were able to go to a desert and physically experience what the desert was like and put it in pers- perspective for them, because some of our kids had never known or had never seen or had not watched movies or videos and even had images of what deserts were like. Um, and so it's, it's a pretty wild experience. We are excited, you know, thinking about year two of the program with more kids fully in person, but we are leveraging as much of it that we can under the current model.
That's amazing. That, that's great to hear. Um, also, my last question, um, there's been a big community push on the ZenDens and the sensory, uh, the sensory rooms. Can you, how is that going? You know, I mean, we're in COVID, I mean, the ZenDens, were they operational before? Did you have the ZenDen?
Yep, we do have a ZenDen at Lord, absolutely. And it's, it's a great tool for kids that need a small, quiet little space, right? I think all kids' needs are different and it's not a widely used tool, meaning, you know, 500 kids a year are not going in the ZenDen. Um, but for that top tier three kid, kiddo, that tier two kiddo that just needs a quiet, safe space, um, it has certainly served its purpose, whether it's with our ASD kiddos that are a little more higher functioning and some of my, most of our regular ed kids as well.
Right.
Um, so it certainly has its place within the multitude of, um, supports that are in place.
So you would recommend the ZenDen maybe in other schools or?
Yeah, it's a small investment for, for another opportunity to support the needs of the kids who need it.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything further for Amy? Kev?
Thank you for your presentation, Dr. Braunhardt. The, um, could you just explain what it looks like in a typical classroom with COVID? I know, uh, when we first went out and we were wondering, like, are the teachers really interacting with kids? Are they doing small groups? Like how, how do they end up making, how do you keep the gains that you are making even through COVID? What does it look like in your classrooms?
So we're trying to mimic small group instruction, really leveraging the technology has been a huge plus for us. Uh, we're also leveraging all the staff across our building, so whether it's my coaches slash interventionists, whether it's my paraprofessional ISLP folks, uh, we have two paraprofessional interventionists whose main job is to help provide small group instruction. So we are, my, my dean of teaching and learning is running small group for math. Uh, we've leveraged a couple of teachers' schedules, so if you're in a long-term, I have a long-term sub, long story short, a long-term sub, she's got a math background, well, she doesn't need the prep, so I'm gonna pull her off and she's gonna get, um, an extra dose of math for our, for kids. So we're really leveraging every adult in the building who can possibly provide small group instruction, um, and support particularly for those kids at tier two and tier three, right? Because if kids are getting the tier one instruction, those kiddos are gonna continue to make progress. But it's the kids that need the tier two and the tier three supports that we need the extra hands to support. But we have been able to replicate most practices that we had pre-COVID now. Um, and to be honest, this fully remote timeframe over the last few months has really helped us do that, because with everybody being fully remote, we haven't had to juggle as many schedules of in-person and at-home. So everybody got to be put together as one and we've been able to divide and conquer that way. Um, it does get a little more challenging when we come back to the CD model, but hopefully with, like everything, now that we've done it before, we can hopefully bounce back and, and still contin- continue to see the efforts and the gains.
Yep. And you said there's 800 students now?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's, that's a big school, but a...
Yeah, we are the second largest to the high school. Well, the first, yeah, Durfee's the, the largest and then we're right underneath.
Where, what's your feeling on that? Is it, um, working, is the trajectory going up? Is the trajectory going down? What?
Well, the trajectory hasn't gone down at all, um, and I don't anticipate it going down. There's a couple of more, uh, classroom spaces, so we still have a little bit of room for capacity. Um, and as you can tell from the, the data that I shared with you, when the behavior is under control and the climate and the culture is a positive one, I feel like we can accomplish anything.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anything further? Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Next up is, um, Jen McKay, our new principal at Green.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hey, Jen.
I'm Jen McKay, for those who don't know me. I've, um, been at Green for quite some time. Um, the last five years, I've been the assistant principal and right now I am the interim principal as our former principal, Kim Luca, has resigned. Um, so tonight I will be addressing some of the turnaround work that we've been doing this year at Green after being identified by the state as a school requiring intervention based on our 2019 M-CAS data. Just to give you a brief background, in 2019, we, um, we scored 32% of students meeting or exceeding in ELA, 24% of students meeting or exceeding in math, and 30% of our students meeting or exceeding in science. We did not meet our targets for our subgroups, including white students with disabilities and our L students. We did, however, exceed our target for our lowest 25%. So I'm gonna start off by just addressing some of the turnaround practices that we have focused on this year. So the first one is leadership responsibility and professional collaboration. This is, um, a really important piece of our work, because as you know, we've had some turbulence with, um, different administration throughout the last five years. So our goal this year has been to really establish strong structures that we can withstand for several years to come. So the first thing that we, um, made sure of doing at the start of the year is, uh, reestablishing our roles within the administrative team, making sure that we remain focused on our duties. We meet every week for a two-hour, um, session that's scheduled with an agenda and clear focuses. Uh, we also have established a stronger instructional leadership team. Now we have representation across all grade levels and, um, this team has really set a few, um, short-term goals. So within the ILT, our short-term goals are just making sure that we are meeting monthly, that we have a, a clear focus. We've worked to establish our instructional focus for the year. And then within that, we started to develop a rubric that we will, will be using for our, our learning walks that are taking place monthly. So our rubric has been drafted. However, it needs a lot of work. So what we're doing during our learning walks is we are coming back to the table, we're calibrating our observations, and we are working with our coaches from Instill to, um, to fine-tune our rubric to make sure that it is really, um, descriptive enough that we can use it for our years to come. We are also providing feedback on our learning walks to our staff, um, but we're making sure that they understand that this year, the purpose of the learning walks really are to grow our team and then next year, um, use that data to really identify our specific needs for PD and further growth. Um, we do have our, our coaches, unfortunately, our ELA coach has resigned, so I do have our math coach really starting her, um, math coaching cycles with teachers. Um, we are meeting weekly to support that work. I have a new VP, Amanda Chamberlain, who's been excellent. She's a great asset to Green. We've been working together closely to go on learning walks, um, do our observations together and again, calibrate our feedback. Um, I think that's really it for the first piece. The second piece, intentional practices for improving instruction. Um, we make sure that we are working closely with our ANET coach. She has been working with the leadership team and the, the coach at Green to, um, develop our specific, to, to identify our specific needs. This year, it's really focused on unfinished learning. It's also focused on using our, our data and assessments to drive our instruction further. Um, our K to two teachers are continuing the fidelity of the new wonders curriculum and we have established data dives throughout the year scheduled where teachers really come to the table and review data and determine next steps. Um, more specifically to our special ed, we have worked, um, we've worked something out with Landmark. Landmark is coming in once a month to coach our sub-separate teachers and provide them tailored support. In addition, Landmark is providing PD for our entire staff and that is focused, focusing on academic skills for students with learning disabilities. And that's going to be continuing until June. Um, for student-specific supports, we have win blocks established. We, we really worked hard a couple of years ago to establish, um, intervention blocks. We, we shifted the name a bit to What I Need, only because what we were noticing is that the students who were in need were getting most of the intervention support where the students who were, um, already on level or maybe needed, needed further, um, further support, they, they weren't getting what they needed. Um, so we wanted to make sure that all students were getting what they need during that intervention time. Um, it's become, it has been a little trickier this year with our remote model, um, and our hybrid model, but teachers are still doing it. They're still pulling their small groups. Um, what else? So we have a ZERN math curriculum that has been purchased for Green and that is, um, an excellent, excellent resource because it aligns with Engage New York and it, it takes a step further to provide students with individualized instruction based on what they need. So that's a, a wonderful addition to our curriculum this year. Um, we have worked with teachers to develop short-term plans based on data. So when we were talking, when I was just talking about our small groups, we really have, um, worked with teachers to develop, um, targeted instructional plans. For school climate and culture, we have, um, established a monthly newsletter for the, our whole community, so all families and staff receive the monthly newsletter. Um, that also shares pieces of our turnaround work, but it also highlights, um, student successes, um, anything that we're celebrating within the school. We have a school-wide Choose Love Award ceremonies that happens quarterly and we are recognizing students on a weekly level. We have spotlight students across all classrooms. So teachers are choosing students who are demonstrating the characteristics of the Choose Love program and they're highlighting them in morning meetings. We continue to have our morning meetings daily across classrooms. Um, we also have trimester awards celebrating the academic achievement and attendance. We have started to reestablish our PTO. It's still in the works. We still need some growth in that area. And Smiles has continued this year, but this year it's, um, mentoring using a PENPAL, um, program. And one additional thing that we did purchase for Green this year is, is called Social Express. And that is an online SEL program that provides students, you don't need a teacher in front of you, you can, you can get on and, and you watch, um, videos and it walks them through lessons on different social skills. So it's just another layer of support, because we obviously haven't been able to get to every student that needs that social emotional piece this year. Um, our SACs are pulling small groups, they are pushing into classrooms. I have a few of our PARAs that are working with students and, and providing social skills lessons and, um, we did provide a PD for managing extreme disruptive behaviors. That was a two-part PD that all our staff have, have, um, been a part of. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that Green has done, but if you have any questions, I'm willing to answer them.
Tommy?
Well, um, Jen, I just want to take, I want to make a formal, um, announcement to say congratulations on being made principal at Green.
Interim.
You know, I think, I, I had a chance to work with you, uh, I had a chance to work with you a few years back. Spent time in your classroom when you were a teacher and your classroom was value-laden. It was all about values and, and, and you were great. And I'd just like to see the consistency. And I'll take a moment, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, to acknowledge not only Jen being principal, but all the principals we have here are from within our district. And, and for me to, to hear their reports tonight, knowing that they all came from within our district, makes me extremely proud of this district and what we can accomplish because we have the talent within ourselves, you know, to drive this district forward. And she's a great example of that, as they all are as well. And so, thank you very much, Ayew.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. I appreciate it.
Anybody got anything else for Jen? Uh, Mark?
Thank you, Ms. McKay. And thank you for stepping into that role and not only stepping into it, but being prepared enough to provide your presentation tonight, as though you were in that role all along. Uh, so, um, congratulations to you for, for pulling that off. I, I guess my only, well, I, I got a number of concerns, but particularly with Green and some other schools, it's, it's that constant... it's that constant turnover at the administration level that's concerning. Because I think when you try to change a school culture, when you try to get some traction with some of the initiatives that you're trying to accomplish there, that requires some consistency at the top. And so if you want people to follow you, then you've got to have a leader there that's consistent, someone who's committed to being there. And for various reasons, we've lost administrators, and to no fault. You know, I'm not trying to, you know, pin this on them. But is there anything that you can, I guess, in conversations with either the assistant superintendent or superintendent, you know, have those conversations about, you're in that building, so you know the culture. You know what's going on. You get a, your finger on the pulse. You can feel, you know, the vibe, I guess, if you will, there. And so I would just ask if, you know, if you have any suggestions as to, you know, how to change that there? I mean, obviously, one, you can do that by, by leading and doing that work yourself. But, you know, if there's something that the district can be doing to provide additional supports there? Because I really think that's, you know, an important piece of solving Green's problems going forward in terms of, you know, you know, the redesign piece of that. And so I don't know if you're comfortable speaking to any of those issues now. If not, that's okay. I just wanted to make sort of a general comment. One, welcome you. And hopefully, you're in an interim role for some time. And if interested and want to stay in that role permanently, then maybe it'll be time for that conversation between you and the superintendent. But I think it's key. I think it's absolutely imperative. And some of the schools where we've seen that turnaround occur, it's really that consistency. It's that changing that school culture. It's that clear identification of everybody's piece in that, in that machine and how things work. And someone to lead that. So without that, I think people are kind of, you know, lost, if you will, a little bit. Or not really sure what the next person coming in is going to have for expectations. And so you've got some challenges there ahead of you. I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
If there are things that you feel are necessary to sort of assist in that process, then don't be shy in having those conversations. Because obviously, we want all our schools to succeed, but we certainly want Green to as well. So thank you for your presentation tonight. I appreciate it. With that, I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Anything further for Jen?
Welcome. Just briefly, do you have a, I don't know what you call it, like the principal over you that helps you, like a district?
A mentor.
Yeah.
Yes, I just received one. Yep.
Who was, who was the prior?
Prior.
Who was working with the school with the prior principal?
With?
So I'm talking about like the person that from the district?
Eric Bradley is the support for the elementary principals. Cheryl Patterson's for the middle schools, secondaries. So Eric Bradley has been coming over, been working with, with the team. Now that we've pointed her interim, she now has, in addition to Eric, she has Principal Kate Cobb as a principal mentor. Given she's about to go through what she just did tonight, plus all the budget process, plus the scheduling, plus all the stuff that happens in the spring. So now she has those two as supports, plus Assistant Superintendent Ponce and Assistant Superintendent Loesch as well. So we're very excited about Jen and the work. I visited, when was that? I was there Friday, got to eat some of the best malasas I ever had in my entire life, made by the dynamic tandem duo there and custodial crew. But, you know, I engaged with teachers and talked. And I think there's definitely a palpable sense of the work. I do agree that, you know, it's, so we've had five principals in five years. And it's unfortunate because the, you're right, the culture. I mean, it's a successful building and it's got a great climate and culture. But we want to be able to sustain that. So I'm hopeful that through support and through the work that we can do this spring, we'll have conversations about that future at some point. But, you know, I agree with what School Committee Member Corey said. You know, we put somebody in, you can't let them out on their own, right? So you want to provide support. But she's an expert teacher. She's been a great VP. She's seen all the stuff and she's got the relationships with the people. So I'm excited about that. We'll give her the supports we can. And as School Committee Costas said, I mean, we've already had these conversations. If you need something, you tell me. If you need something, don't hesitate. And, you know, we've already had our budget meetings and we've talked about, you know, she came in there with some, you know, some great ideas about doing some things differently. And I want to support that because it is a turnaround school. We can't do the same things over and again. And, you know, she's got some really innovative ideas around coaching with the teacher supports and the interventions. And I want to run with that. And as you guys know, and these guys will tell you, you know, I hired all four of those people you just mentioned. I'm very, and they found them here, right? You don't have to look too far, right?
Really proud of that.
And I am too. And, you know, we don't have to look too far. We've got great talent here in the system. So I'm excited about what we've got going on. I think the team at Green is excited. The building itself is ripe for, for that work. We just got to get the traction.
So the reason why I asked that was, I know you're new and stuff. How many years is Green been in turnaround?
This, it was our, last year was the first year that we were in turnaround.
So I'm sure this will be going through. But as I'm reading your document and other people's documents, there's like a lot of programs in here with, we tried this one, we tried that one. And why I asked the question about who's in the district is that if we know that things are working, we should just probably be doing more of it. Everybody has to have their own individuality. But a lot of times, I'm reading these things and wondering, I think another school did something different, but that seemed like it was good. So that's why I asked the question about who was actually kind of merging all that stuff together. I wish you well with what you're, you know, you're undertaking here. I would say to the committee and to Mr. Costas' concern about keeping people in the district, we've talked about it and we've never acted on it. We were told we were going to get it acted on over a year already, that we need to adjust the structures of salaries in this city. Because what's happening is we're paying assistant principals and it makes no sense to take on all of the duties and responsibilities without getting compensated accordingly. So I keep on saying it, but we got to, we really got to look at it. If you want to see, why should somebody leave a union, go to a non-union position that's going to make them work tremendous amount of hours and have tremendous stress if we're not paying them accordingly? So with that, I yield. Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead, Matt.
I just want to say, we'll be bringing that forward to the committee in the next two meetings. So it's hopefully this fiscal year that gets addressed. Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. McKay, for being here tonight. Very good presentation. Thank you. I, so I'm just assuming that you mentioned the turbulence in the beginning had to do with the leadership. Okay, that's fine.
Yes.
The other question I had was as far as like, how's the attendance at Green? Whether it's in-person, in the hybrid, or even at home and remote?
Yeah, attendance has taken a dip this year with the remote. We have been trying to reach out to families. We've been trying to have initiatives to celebrate attendance. We meet weekly to, to work with our attendance officer and our SEL administration. We all have an assigned grade level that we are targeting. We're working closely with teachers, doing all we can to get kids back. We're identifying students of, of certain needs to come back as a CD student. So that has helped tremendously, bringing those students back. For Wednesdays, we're trying to make it more exciting and engaging for them, implementing some Spirit Wednesdays. So we are making strong efforts, but we certainly need to remain focused on that for the rest of the year.
And what we were talking about before, as far as the assistance, that you might need additional assistance, do you think that maybe additional assistance with a SAC or truant attendance officer might help the school? Or do you think that they're doing, they're doing the good job? It's just the, the environment of the, like, what did it dip to, the attendance? Do you know?
When we were in December, it was 88 percent.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, that was, yeah, we had 92 last year at this point. So, so we definitely could, we can always use more help, reaching out to families and getting them. And like I said, it, you know, we're trying to figure out ways to celebrate and recognize attendance, but also making it worthwhile for our parents because a lot of our younger students are the ones who are not attending. So K and one, where they might not have as much control over getting up and logging in. So some, yeah.
Oh, go ahead. No, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
So is the, the attendance more so with the remote that, that it's dipped? Or is it, is it both?
It's both, but remote is, yes. Remote has become, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, look, I, I mean, like, like the school committee said here and the mayor, and I think, and Mr. Corey as well, I think there's probably, you know, you don't want to see the attendance dip. And I think if there's more, you know, maybe more help needed with the attendance officers or additional SAC that's going to help in that, in that particular with the attendance, then I think we should absolutely do it. And I, like everybody else said, I'm willing to help Green School and youself.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anything further for Jen?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Principal of Durfee High School, Matt Damaris.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I think you'll start to hear some common themes as Durfee is also in its second year of turnaround plan implementation. We did make some ground last year and before we hit March. You know, we could point to things like improvement in leadership with the instructional leadership team, a consistent implementation of the workshop model, a growing sense of how to use data to intervene with students at the high school level, and a building of a shared culture across the school, which is things that we were all making good progress on. And then last, last spring's disruption kind of, I wouldn't say brought that to a halt, but it changed the focus. And so as we planned over the summer for our opening, we kept our eyes on all that progress and what we could do in the current context, but also had a very strong eye on operations at first, when we were in the hybrid model especially. So a lot of support for teachers in that way was on making sure that the building felt safe with the huge complex that we had and the management and the, in the turning hallways. We really had to have all hands on deck and kind of change jobs a little. But when we looked at what we would be doing in terms of the turnaround plan, we go one by one. So turnaround practice one, we look at leadership and shared responsibility, professional collaboration. We wanted to build on the advancements we made with the instructional leadership team. That team is comprised of deans, directors, lead teachers, counselors, VPs, Shayna Morgan and myself. Also, from the district, Kim La Liberty and Cheryl Rabbit are often at our meetings. That team has really grown with, with the voice, especially representing the teacher voice. So I'm really impressed with some of our teacher leaders this year and how they've really risen to the occasion to bring the teachers' opinions forward, not only their concerns, but where we can improve, right? So I'm really happy to say that that's an area of advancement. And then that trickles down into the PLCs for each department. You know, the way they're laid out, the dean can't run them all. So the lead teacher's taken on the role and really grown some leadership there. And I'm very pleased with that. When we look at the advancements in PLC, it's getting that data cycle going so that as teachers are developing common lessons or we're implementing benchmarks or diagnostics, teams coming back with the data and the student work, looking at results, and then deciding what they could do as soon as the next day to change instruction or to intervene for students. A big piece of that for especially ELA and math would be using ANET data. But the other departments have developed their own benchmarks that kind of line up through the coaching of our ANET partner to, to ask the kinds of questions that would give you an idea of how kids improving in numeracy, even though they might be taking a science benchmark, or how they're improving on the literacy in the history benchmark, for example. So that would be, you know, with turnaround practice one, it also takes a look at providing teams, teachers with common planning time. And that's a structure that we continue to maintain even in the current model. I think actually, technology supports it a little better, actually. Turnaround practice two, focus on intentional practices for improving instruction. So we remain committed to looking at tier-one instruction as the biggest area to improve, to get improved student results, while at the same time, building a system of intervention for students. So you're going to hear some things that are going to echo some of my colleagues just a few minutes ago. We're in our second year of the MTSS Inclusive Academy. And so with that comes training in universal design for learning. UDL is something that solves a lot of the issues in the planning for students to have, all have access to lessons at different entry points. And if there's a support that's good for a student, then it's good for every student. And so that concept is really growing at the high school. We have a new curriculum over in math. The Carnegie curriculum is really, the teachers are starting to get comfortable with it. It's its first year, but it's, I'm seeing some gains as we look at data for ANET, both on the ELA and the math side. If we don't have parity with last year's data, because this is the second year with ANET, there are some improvements in some very important standards, particularly in geometry, algebra, and in ELA too. Okay, moving on to, sorry. One of the pieces that was a little difficult at the front end of the year is consistent feedback for teachers by way of learning walks. With the safety on the front end of, of the operations this year, we weren't conducting a lot of in-person walks. But when the shift happened on December 7th to fully virtual, we got some traction with regular learning walks, seeing teachers really making some tremendous effort to recreate school on the screen, using breakout rooms, using, you know, casting. It's amazing what they've learned in a short amount of time. And I'm really pleased that we've improved tier-one instruction while not necessarily having kids in person in front of us. When we look at turnaround practice three, specific support, supports for students, we're looking at, at two things. Through the MTSS Academy, supporting all learners within a lesson. We're looking at how can we replicate elements of the freshman academy and the systems of support within there at other grade levels? Well, the kids aren't in front of us right now. You know, we've got 100 kids in the building and it's strange to walk around. 125 kids maybe a day. They're all home. So the grade offices have retooled themselves and they're operating purely outreach. You know, reaching out to students, home visits, visiting classrooms, supporting teachers, going to the weekly PLCs to find out from the teachers what's going on and how can they support more. We'll be kicking off a pilot of some second-tier intervention, so to speak, with some grade office groups that are being set up. We have a daily homeroom. We call it Durfee 360. It's a la an advisory every morning. Why? Because the kids got a touch point every morning. I, I'll stop by teachers' rooms as they're checking in on the screen. Mr. Agia, how you doing today? Do you have everything you need? Mr. Corey, good to see you, you know, and there's that personal touch every day. That's going to be an important piece moving forward when we can get back to what looks like real life because it's going to plug into the win. We're going to have a win at Durfee too, What I Need. Students that need intervention are going to get it. And then the students that want to go deeper in other areas, they're going to be able to do that. That's part of some of the redesign that we could be talking about shortly. When we look at turnaround practice four, climate and culture, it's, it's a little weird this year, you know? I can't really say that the in-person culture is, is anything. It's sterile and it's strange. But when I go through classrooms, I see teachers and students and I see a lot of talk. The teachers giving the students opportunities to either speak. If they're reluctant to speak and turn the camera on all the time, they got a chat going through the whole class. They hit them with polls. They hit them with Kahoot. There's a lot of ways to draw out the student's voice and to really make sure that they're okay and that they're moving forward. I don't have a lot of data to talk to you about because there's no MCAS to compare year to year right now. And it's a good thing that Desi was enlightened to again, say that we can approach the class of 2021 the same way we did last, last year in terms of MCAS. That's my basic overview for the turnaround and where we're at right now. Is there any questions?
Anybody have any questions, Tom?
Yeah, I'm going to give you a lot, a lot of credit, Matt, for hanging in there this year. Such an abnormal year. I did have a chance to visit Durfee a couple of months back. And it was crazy to see how quiet the school was and to see how much less student life was present inside the building. And I know you talked about turnaround stuff. At the high school level, turnaround, there's, there's, there's a concept called vertical alignment. And it starts in elementary school. And then it transitions to middle school and then it transitions to high school. it transitions to middle school, and then it transitions to high school, and at the high school, not only are you dealing with the effects of vertical alignment, and what they already know, or what they don't know from the middle school level, but there's also a huge transient populations of students who move in and move out, move in and move out, that further skew the numbers against, you know, positive numbers. So, you guys are doing yeoman's work there, very pleased with the team. We just had a subcommittee meeting, I was very, very pleased with the leadership team at Durfee High School, you guys are working so hard to produce results. Everybody has their thumb on the job, there's great communication going on interdepartmentally, which is very crucial to see, and so, once we get the kids back in the building on a normal basis, until then, I wish you really well, and thank you for doing a yeoman's job, for leading that high school through these times.
Thank you.
Ayil. Anything further for Matt Damaris? Thank you, Matt, but you might as well stay there, oh.
Sorry, one question.
Go ahead, Kev.
So, thank you for the presentation. So when I'm looking at the technology integration in the school, I recall back in the spring when, you know, we're looking at needing more people, and I think it was presented that we needed a person or two, I think you might have, if you have one, you need another one, it was in the presentation, and then I look at the number of kids you have, the number of the technology that you just talked about, and then, last meeting or the meeting before, we talked about the goals, the goals for next year were to bring in more instructional technology folks, and then, I don't know if there's been any action on that at your building now? Do you need another person? What does it look like at Durfee for tech integration?
So, right now, we have one staff that's shared with RPA in Stone, and then one staff that's dedicated to Durfee this year. Constant training, all day long, developing, you know, online asynchronous training for folks, trying to get a gauge of how much advancement folks have made on their own, there's been a lot of PD out there, some of it offered through the district, some people just being thirsty and going on and getting it, we're trying to get a survey of the staff to see where everyone's at and what they need, can use more, can always use more, we're about to head into a new building that's going to be outfitted to the nines with technology. We're a part of, a layer of the Vills grant, where we just, we're entering now with a hotspot grant, but we know that we got to be ready for the eighth graders coming up, because they're having a really strong year this year with technology through the Vills across the district.
So you have one and a half, is that theoretically?
For instructional, integration facilitator, that's the position, yes.
Are they new people? The person that's there full-time, is that a new person, or somebody that, has the person been at Durfee for a while, are they embedded in the Durfee culture?
He's just new this year.
A new person for this year?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I personally will, I've said it at the last meeting, and that should have been done a long time ago, we have the money, it's clearly needed, and I think it should happen sooner than later, so that you're ready for that new school to jump in, so as far as I'm concerned, I'm going to support that, and I hope it comes up quick. Thank you. Ayil.
Anything further? Thank you, Matt, you might as well stay there, though, because we're up next with the, next on the agenda, is 11.4, is a discussion and vote to approve a program of study as referred by the Instructional Subcommittee and presented.
Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the program of studies for Durfee? Hearing none, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next item up on the agenda, thank you, Matt Damaris. First read, Security Resource Officers Memorandum of Understanding as Referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee and Presented by Dr. Malone.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of information.
Go ahead.
I think that should read School Resource Officer, not Security Resource Officer.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Might just be a typographical error, but just.
I think you're correct.
So people know that, I believe it's School Resource Officers.
It's the SROs, you're right. Thank you.
So a motion to approve the first read?
Motion to approve the first read.
Second.
Any questions on the agreement? Kev?
Is the person here from the, please come?
Yes, he's virtually.
Right behind you, buddy.
How you doing, sorry?
Hello, Mr. Agia, can you?
Thank you, I watched the subcommittee meeting, and one of the questions I had, I know this is only the first read, but it refers to the standard operating procedure, as well as the MOU, and I'm wondering if that standard operating procedure does not exist anymore, because it was only presented as the MOU, or how does that work?
The standard operating procedure, there's an echo in the background, but it's still in effect here at the station, there's no, we're going to be updating it due to the reform law, so it's going to be an ongoing process, getting the operating procedure.
Yep, just to summarize, what I heard him say was that the new law is going to make some changes so that we need it. My only concern and question, and it doesn't have to go on and on here, was in the past, the standard operating procedure and the MOU had sections that conflicted with each other, so when we bring this back forward, I'd like to see the standard operating procedure to be sure that they don't conflict, and I think you addressed some of these, I think. I did meet with the chief to go over my concerns, some of those were met, I thank you for that, but the, I think the standard operating procedure maybe should get forwarded to see, so just so we can take a look to see if we're agreeing to something, that it happens. And my only other comment was on the overtime, it was mentioned at the meeting that the, if the School Resource Officer needs to stay, that it would just get billed to the school department, and I think that we corrected that in the prior year, that the superintendent has to approve any overtime, it just doesn't happen automatically? I'm not sure if you're aware of that, or is that?
To my understanding, it's the principal who gets authorization from the superintendent, and then he makes that approval on our.
Yep, and I mean, as we go forward, that's one of the questions, just to be clear on, so that we, what we were having was, we would just, we thought the bill was X dollars, then all of a sudden, it's like, where's this overtime coming from? So we had made a thing prior to your existence in this position, so I think that's just something to look at. And my last point was on the, I think you guys talked about it at the meeting, about emergencies, or, you know, like a pandemic, so I think it needs to be a little clearer related to, the school department pays for the school resource officers, and when we had a situation with the pandemic in the spring, that money's already accounted for in the net school spending, that if the chief would have used the SROs in the city, technically speaking, that wouldn't have been able to be used for, to count towards net school spending, which would therefore potentially bind the city to owing some money, so if we could, over the next month, take a look at that piece, how does a potential pandemic or a situation like that exist, and how does that interact with the net school spending on the city and the school department's side would be my only other concern? Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anything else? I do think some of the red passages do make a stronger agreement for both sides, I like the changes, and I do agree with Kevin, because I know you guys are under a lot of state-pushed changes down there, so I hope they all align this time when we get done with it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, oh, Josh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call?
Roll call on 11.5, School Resource Officers. Thanks, Mark.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 11.6, a discussion and vote to approve the job description for the Chief Information Officer as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee and presented by Ken Pacheco.
Good evening, everyone.
Go ahead, Ken.
So, the description you have here is a graph, and a little bit of history, all three individuals, the past year and a half were under my department, and I guess the easiest way to explain it is, if you're doing a bathroom in a house, and you want to change a tub and a shower, you call a plumber, you don't call an electrician. So, having the operations person running the technology department when I don't speak the language, is a little difficult, a little difficult for me to wrap my arms around it, but also a little difficult for me to actually lead that group. They're three talented individuals who, I don't want to say work in silos all the time, but sometimes, by the nature of what they do, that's what's happening, and I was told that the district had a chief operating officer at one time, but budget cuts forced the, forced that to, that position to be eliminated. What we're asking is that we approve a job description, and depending on conversation at the senior level and with the school committee, that this position be reinstated and funded to lead the district in a time where technology is paramount in the right direction. We are spending millions of dollars on technology, there is opportunity for us to upgrade many of our buildings, and it would be, I think it would be great for the district to have someone who, as I said, speaks the language, understands the pieces, and can orchestrate the three individuals, which will produce a much better product than I was able to produce. The budget, this year's budget has many items that we are trying to increase, repairs and infrastructure in most of our buildings, but again, it would be, it would behoove this committee to move in a direction of a CIO, and the first step would be to approve a job description.
Motion to approve job description for Chief Information Officer.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ken, I was obviously a member of the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee, and I approved it to send it to the full body for the vote. I guess my, like, my question is just to maybe reiterate what I asked you at the Facilities and Operations meeting, is that the three that we have right now, you said that are doing a good job, everything's on target, there's no particular big issues right now, even with the new school, the new Durfee coming up, it seems to be, from what you told me, that things are going smooth, and everybody's pitching in, and giving us some good, you know, there's good discussion about what's next in line, and what needs to be done, correct?
Yes, I guess, I guess what I would say, Mr. Hart, is that I think the department, the technology department is reacting, we have, we are producing some work in advance of, but we are more reacting, and I think that the lack of planning as a group under a leader who understands the work sometimes shows, and I think that it's a problem that we've been able to overcome up to this point, but there has never been a time when technology's been so important to this district, and we're doing okay, but I think that there's always room for improvement, and I think that a person at the helm of just that, with the sole responsibility of producing that product, is definitely going to make the district better.
And the reason I asked you that, is I just wanted to make sure that we're doing the right thing in hiring a, I think, a $110,000, $135,000 salary range here, which is a lot of money, and we've just talked about the district with teachers hiring within, and I'm all for that, and I think that, you know, that we're going to advertise this particular job, and that's the way we do things, that's fine, but I, I mean, before we even considered that, did we consider hiring within with the people that we have presently right now? Because as far as I'm concerned, we want to hire within, we have people in that, in this department that can do that, this particular job, so my contention is that, why advertise it when we have the people in place right now to do that? In fact, and I mentioned Mr. Cabral, who's got a lot on his plate, but I think he is, you know, just one of the people that are perfectly qualified for this particular position, so I guess that's my question, is, we like to hire within, we're doing it, we showed it here tonight with these, with the principals here, they came from within the school department, and why can't we do this with the technology position that's up for?
I think we can, I just, right now, we don't have a job.
Why advertise it?
Well, we don't have a job description right now, so what is that person going to do?
Okay, that's fine.
So that's what I'm saying, so the job description is the first piece, and I think that when we reference the principals that were here, we referenced them because they were very successful, and they could do the job, and we may have people in the district right now, as you mentioned, who can do this job. I don't think that we are going out on a limb by advertising a position, it's never hurt us to advertise a position, it doesn't mean that it's going to take someone from outside the district to run it.
No, and I know that we, you said that this is, we're here for the job description, and I'm looking at the job description, so I'm looking at it, and I'm seeing that, you know, we've got, we've got people in here, in this school right now, that can do the job, that's all I'm saying, that's all. I understand this is a draft job description, and we're not going to, after this, we're not going to go advertise it, because I think in the FNO meeting, it was established that the earliest case scenario for someone to be taken in this position is going to be in July, so I'm fine with approving the draft job description, I just want to make it clear and reiterate that I'm all for, as we all are here, hiring within, so I think that's the goal, and I'm hoping that's what we're going to be doing, so, thank you.
Mark?
I'll defer, Mr. Agia will perform.
Oh, you did, go ahead, Kev.
He had his hand up.
I didn't see him, sorry.
Thank you. So, the question was just asked, and I think you presented that you've had to handle this, these people have been working under you for the last five, six months, like it's?
No, so these people have worked for me, one of them has worked for me at a leadership role since I came here, four years ago. One has taken a leadership role now, and for the last year has worked under me, and one was working for me for about a year and a half.
Right.
Only one has worked for me since day one.
Yep, so part of my concern is over this, is we have to look at the totality of a situation that's happening, and I pay attention when things get sent to us, I pay attention when we get documents and forms. First thing I'd like to say is, just in April, we received this here, I don't know if it was in this binder, but it was basically an investment in technology for the Florida Public Schools, April 3rd, 2020. I thought, quite frankly, that this was a good document. At the time, there wasn't any questions, it was at this particular location, it articulated what we need, we needed to change some job descriptions underneath, it details back in '09 when we had a Chief Information Officer that people are referring to, it articulated basically a historical perspective on where we were, where we are now, and what we'd like to do going forward, and I agree with what Mr. Hart said, that I think that we have people that have been doing a damn good job in technology over the long haul here, including, right now, through this pandemic, through getting all of the stuff done. I think we've done a damn good job, as far as I'm concerned. So, when I look at the historical perspective, I wanted to say, okay, the Chief Information Officer, I think that position needs to be looked at relative to what everybody else is doing that's different from 10 years ago? How many people we have working underneath us, do we just need more staff? Because it doesn't make any sense to hire a person at $135,000 if we're not having enough troops, like I just said about the Durfee piece. So, I don't miss those things, so I'm not necessarily saying I'm opposed to the position, but there's a few things that are really bothering me about how this is going down right now. So, when I ask you, when I say these people are working for you, and I have said this publicly, and I'll say it again, you are spread too thin, and they're doing too many things, I'm not denying that, but what's really frustrating to me is that we have a situation I don't miss and I don't forget when things are presented to us that are opposite of that. So for instance, September comes, certain things happened in September. So then on September 23rd, 2020, which is probably four or five months ago, we get a notice that says, now that I have a strong team in place, I'm aligning the central office for maximum site level support and strategic functionality. And I'll just paraphrase, it says, the two individuals that work in technology that are really part of this, that have been doing a damn good job over the years here, they're going to report and be evaluated to as, by Assistant Superintendent Ponce and taken away from you and put to Assistant Superintendent Ponce. Part of my frustration right now is that you're here presenting this and it has nothing personal against you, Mr. Pacheco, but what in the hell is going on when we can't get even that correct of who's reporting to who and why? I have my suspicions on why things happen the way they did, but it's not, to me, this is not okay to have things like this happen that are not accurate, that are just, it puts you in a tough spot, it puts Mrs. Ponce in a tough spot, it, it's just not the right thing to do. And it's really frustrating because I'm sitting here listening to Mr. Hart say, ask you a question, a direct question, and you gave a direct answer and I appreciate that. He asked you if the department was going good. And I'm watching him and I'm watching you say yes, and I'm over here looking at the superintendent who's making faces to Mr. Hart as he's talking.
I've got a mask on. What faces can I make, Mr. Hagia?
Okay, go, please.
I'm just pointing out an observation.
I know, but that's...
Here's a frustrating piece for me.
Frustrating?
This is a very frustrating piece for me that I'm watching this happen. And at the same time, I still don't understand, based on what I just said, how are you still being in charge of him?
So, first of all, one person, as I said, I've had under my supervision since the day I walked in the door. One person I had under my supervision 30% of the time, so to speak, 70% of the time they were under the CIO. They were always under the CIO. That's never changed. At some point, there was an issue and then they were put under me full-time. And the last person was not a director level and that person became a director and that person became a director and under my supervision. So I have not had these three individuals since day one. I've only had one and another one a real short amount of the time because it's teaching and learning. One of those belong in teaching and learning. One of them does not belong necessarily by itself. He's also a member of a union, so he needs to be evaluated. I can't evaluate, I don't have a license. So he has to be under a chief operating officer, a chief, uh, chief academic officer. So at that point, that move was only made because of personalities, it wasn't made for anything else. It didn't belong under me. I couldn't evaluate. The one individual that was with me from day one was always under the COO's position.
You and I both know why this is going on and why this happened the way it did. It's not about personality. Let's just be clear about that. The end of this comment says, we are getting back to alignment that makes sense based on need and not personality, so that Ken is totally focused on the myriad of real operations needs that is where I want all his time. I don't disagree with that. You're spread too thin, my friend. Totally, absolutely. But in this case here, I don't think you should be the person that's forced to come up here and present this. So from being hard on you, I apologize, but I'm just telling you, I just don't think it's fair to you to be given all of this stuff going on to be, to be the person presenting it.
Mr. Hagia, if I could, because at 60 years old, nobody forces me to do anything. Okay? Nobody's forced me to do anything since I left the city. And the four years that I've been here have been fantastic, so nobody is forcing me to be up here. We sat as a senior group without the superintendent and discussed how we needed to fix things because we were not under control. We had a lot of things that we needed to rail in. We talk about this almost every day, about equipment, about laptops, about different items that are being bought in single strands as opposed to multiple, multiple purchases, different brands. All we're saying is, and all I'm saying is, is that it doesn't seem to make any sense. From my standpoint, I try to keep everything as uniform as possible. I came to this committee many times looking to make things proprietary because I can't afford to have a hundred different items in different buildings trying to maintain that. This is the same thing. The process has to be uniform. And unfortunately, it's not. And unfortunately, there's a lot of things in the district that doesn't happen exactly the way it should and we've been able to sustain, sustain that. However, right now, when technology is at its most peak time for this district, I'm not the leader that I need to be and that the district needs in that position. And if there's one in this district, if there's a person in this district that should be leading this, then by all means, that job should go to that person. But I'm not it.
I don't, I don't disagree with you about, um, the need going forward and I think it's, I'm open to the discussion. All I'm telling you is I just didn't like the way that it's happening here. In this document that we just talked about, that I referenced, it talks about some of the same things you talked about, having purchasing, you know, more centralized so that we, you know, a lot of the things that are happening are not all bad in technology, quite honestly.
Well, absolutely not.
I mean, we, with a shoestring budget for the years that I first served on this committee, in technology, things are not bad. And I'm just not going to sit here and let it look like as if the technology department stinks because I've sat here and watched people come present and everybody here saying how wonderful they're doing, from the top of the district to every single member of this committee, saying how good that they're doing, how wonderful they're doing, they created the remote learning. And I think that it's really, um, I, I don't want to get that missed, that, that people are just doing a lousy job because I don't think that they are.
I never said they're doing a lousy job. In fact, I, I said that they were doing a great job, the three people.
Kev, let's stay on the job description, please.
Thank you. So with the job description, um, I said it before when we did another job, these are administrative positions and I believe that they should be part of the union. And I think that it's a, a union, um, responsibility that when you're creating a new job description, that we go to the union to discuss the situation. My question is, did we go approach the union about...
This is a senior staff position, I wouldn't put this position in the union. Absolutely not. This is a, this is a position that needs to be at senior staff meetings and is not a union position.
So there are no senior staff positions in the union? That's, that's illegal to...
There's no senior, senior staff?
Yeah, like, a hundred and thirty thousand dollar staff or a hundred and twenty thousand dollar staff?
I don't think a dollar determines. I'm the, I'm the lowest paid senior staff person in the district.
Yep.
Should I be in the union or should I be in the district? I, I, I have, none of my job description tells me I belong in a union. I can't lead union people being in the union. I can't lead the people I have to lead unless I can be in the senior staff.
Yeah, and my question was, did you present it? And I guess the answer to that is no.
No, what?
If the administr, if the administrators' union requires that if we're going to create new administrative positions, we have to have a dialogue with them. And you're telling me, you just know, point blank, that we didn't even have a discussion with them?
I did not.
Right. I, I mean, I just think that's food for thought as we go forward. The other reason why I think we need to consider putting these positions in the union is because we want to make sure that people have protection, to be treated the right way and have protection. And I don't think that having individual contracts is the way to go and I'm certainly not going to support it as long as it's with that. Uh, but I do appreciate your answers and thank you very much. I yield.
I, I, I will make a comment here. I, I'm, I can't agree with you on that one, Kev. I think these senior staff positions have to evaluate union people and in some cases, they could even be in the administrators' union. I don't think that that's the way to go. I think these people have to be independent. I, I don't want to see to that end, I can read at the end here where it says, um, "All other duties deemed necessary by the superintendent." I don't want to be hamstrung by a restrictive contract that tells them they have to fit a certain place. Now, I know that can be modified, but at the same time, Kenny, Curly, Maria, anybody, I don't want them in the union. I want them to have the freedom to evaluate and work with people in the union at the administrators' level, all the way up, Paris, anybody. But I don't think that's a good mix. I don't, I don't even know how that works. Just looking at it on the face of it.
Yeah, I mean, my point was just that if it's a requirement of the union, they should be out of respect approached on it. None of those folks you mentioned are in the union?
No.
Which ones? The ones you just mentioned?
Maria, Tracy.
Just Tracy, she's the only one. But Tracy, Tracy doesn't sit in senior staff meetings.
That's right, she's a director too, right?
When it's convenient, I get it.
Okay, sorry, I missed one, Kev. Who's got anything else for Kenny? Uh, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So back in 2009 when we had a chief information officer, that person was not in the union. There was no discussions with the union about that position being in the union. Um, so I see it as a senior position, someone who obviously can evaluate those individuals that are in those positions, that they're going to serve. I think this is an important position. This isn't an indictment on the people who we have working in technology, they do a great job. I don't think anybody here would disagree with that, um, under some very trying times, mind you. But I also think in fairness to them, they should have somebody who is in a position, and no disrespect to you, Mr. Pacheco, who, who knows the trade, who knows technology. You don't. And I think these three individuals, they're doing a good job, deserve to have somebody that supervises them, that speaks that language that they do. Um, and, and as Mr. Hart said, hiring within, that's fine. I, I don't think we've ever denied anybody that worked for us to apply for any job posting. And, and certainly if those people have, um, the credentials and they rise to the top through the process, then absolutely they should be given consideration. There's no reason why we should look in a different direction, but we still need a job description, there still needs to be a process put in place, there still needs to be an application pool and people need to be evaluated. So, um, I'm going to support it. I mean, we've spent millions of dollars in technology and I think it's important, you know, we can talk all we want about the cost of the salary here, but for the small amount of salary, for the amount that this district has invested in technology, it's a drop in a bucket. We're talking millions of dollars in investment in technology all across this district, whether it's software, hardware, you name it. And there's still more work to be done. And so why not give the three people an opportunity? If they want to apply, apply. But they also deserve to have somebody who they can discuss issues with, that can raise issues at the senior level, um, being, being part of budget discussions and so on. They need that person who can advocate for them as well. If they choose not to apply, if they choose to apply and they rise to the top, they may be that person. But I, I, I think, you know, unfortunately, the district had to get away from the, the chief information officer back in the day for budget reasons. It was an unfortunate situation back then, um, but I think now, given the amount of money this district has invested in technology, the fact that we have three people who come to work, that are doing the job, that are doing a great job, I think they deserve that opportunity to have somebody who that they can rely on to, for professional development, for discussion on technology, for future investments, you name it. They should have that go-to person available to them who can sit at the senior level and advocate for their needs. And I, like I said, no knock on you, Mr. Pacheco, but you're not that person. Neither is Mrs. Ponce, um, quite frankly. Um, and I think right now, they're all doing their jobs amongst themselves, that whatever their job description entails, that's what they're doing. You need to have someone at the top that can coordinate that amongst that group. Um, so I'm certainly going to support it. Um, you know, I just think it's a wise investment, given what we've, we've already expended in, in this district in technology. And I think they need that level of support that unfortunately you can't provide for them and neither can Mrs. Ponce. So with that, I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Anything further? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Hagia?
No.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
No.
Ms. Lowery?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next item up is 11.7, a discussion and vote to approve the nutrition funds to the new Durfee High School as referred, uh, as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions for Mr. Pacheco?
I'd like to hear the presentation.
Oh, go ahead, Kev, I mean, go ahead, Ken.
So, um, the nutrition funds, um, have a purpose, the, the residual, um, funds have a purpose, uh, in, in purchasing equipment. Uh, we've purchased vehicles, um, for delivery, um, to different schools. We've purchased a lot of restaurant equipment for inside of our cafeterias and, um, tables and chairs for other cafeterias and, uh, we've set the district up and we're in pretty good shape. The high school, um, being, being built, um, requires quite a bit of, um, restaurant equipment, millions of dollars worth of, of equipment that is going into the new high school. Very little of, from the old high school is moving for a variety of reasons, most of it is, is the age of the equipment. The ability to buy tables, um, for the high school through the nutrition fund is one of those acceptable, um, items and we received confirmation from, uh, Mark O'Leary, from, Desi, that, um, they approved our, our request to do this. Uh, we brought it to the committee. Uh, what this will do is, is free up $245,000 of construction funds, FFNE funds, um, at the high school and allow us to purchase those, um, those items using the nutrition money. With the freed-up funds, it'll probably either go into FFNE or to some other construction-related, um, requests that may or may not be covered in the current budget. It may allow us to, um, buy more computers, it may allow us to, uh, purchase, um, different items in labs or, uh, in, it could even be in the kitchen for that matter. Um, but this will allow us to take some of those funds and put this in here, uh, the account. Uh, Desi had asked us, um, for, um, a sheet to show that the account had these funds available and that would not be detrimental to, uh, the, um, the nutrition fund. So the request is to move 245, well, actually to pay a bill, not to move any money, to pay a bill, um, from Durfee High School using $245,365.92. And those funds in the high school will stay currently in FFNE and be moved if necessary.
Any questions, Ken? Kevin?
So the, um, I know we talked in the past about this nutrition account?
Yes.
And you know, we're very familiar with what I'm going to ask you.
Yes.
Uh, do we have the money in the account to ultimately do what I think I've been saying for several years now and to make that account self-sustaining?
I, I'm not going to go out on a limb and say yes, I'm going to say that the account has never been better than it is right now, um, with the, um, the institution of CEP in, um, the, um, in our lunch program, it has generated some, um, some money that we knew it was going to generate a small difference, um, we didn't realize how much and that account is, um, is in really good shape. And our hope is that we will, um, we will have enough funds to possibly do that if that would be the will of the, uh, of the committee.
Yes, just for the education of the public, what I'm referring to is, we have a nutrition account that we pay the salaries of the individuals out of the account. The benefits, which is several hundred thousand dollars per year, are not taken out of that account, but they can legitimately, legally be taken out of the account as long as it's got enough money in it. And I've been fighting for several years to try to get that account to be, um, a revolving account to pay for all the expenses. I think it's a sound fiscal practice. Um, I'm hesitant to support this, knowing that I think more importantly would be that piece, you know? Uh, I do trust that you're going to be continuing to work on it. Um, I really think it just makes sense. If they, we're paying the salaries, we should pay the, everything out of that account so that therefore free up money that we can spend in the school department for other reasons, just like you're doing with the building department. We're going to pay for the tables so that the building committee can do something else with that money. Same thing should be, I think, as we go forward. But my only question was on the Durfee, like, where are we at with the budget? Is the budget that tight that we've had overages? Like, what, what is driving the big ticket items that is driving the need? I know I was always an advocate, as Mr. Corey said before, about the baseball field that should have been included, I don't want to rehash that, but if we use up all the contingency money, we're not going to be able to have that and then we're going to be, where are we going to, how are we going to get the field? So is there something that triggered this, uh...
So all I can, all I can say without being so accurate, I would want you to have something in front of you. Um, the construction project for Durfee High School was $360 million, okay, of which we're paying $263 million for that school. That million, that hundred million dollars was cut a year, a year prior to construction starting and the building was, I don't want to say redesigned, but at that point, for lack of a better term, we did a hundred million dollars worth of value engineering. And a hundred million dollars does a lot to a project, okay? A third of the project disappeared. A third of the project disappeared, more or less, and we needed to figure out what we were gonna do. And fields were the easiest choice, so the fields went out the window immediately. And as things start peeling back, as we see what we can and what we can't do, those decisions were made along the way. The project is not over budget, the project is on budget as of right now, and we're hoping to keep it that way. And the opportunity to be able to use these funds to free up another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so to speak, will allow us to do some things that possibly were cut out when we had to redesign the building.
Yep. Is there a major expense on the cosmetics of the fieldhouse, outside of the fieldhouse, the walls or something?
So the exterior, the exterior of the walls of the fieldhouse were never part of the project. They were never part of the project. The project was going to maintain those panels with a fresh dressing, so to speak. So it wasn't going to be remove the panels and put new panel, and cover those panels. The intent was to epoxy it, paint it, put some kind of surface on it. The problem was that after you start doing the investigation, after you start removing some of the panels, to see, to make the connections of, for instance, the new entrance, the foyer area of the main entrance to the fieldhouse, when you start building out, you start noticing things in the walls, or lack thereof, poorly constructed areas. You start finding these things, and now you take a look at the panels, and there are cracks. There are small pieces missing. We started looking at the material that was going to be able to repair those panels, and the look was not right. The colors were not gonna match. The different materials that we were gonna repair with were gonna have some shading that may, you'd pick 'em out, so to speak, because of the colors would not, the paint or the epoxy would not be able to adhere.
How much was that? That's a big number?
Two point five million.
Wow. That's a lot.
That's a lot.
But no, I said what I had to say, and I think you understand. I think it's fiscally sound to do the piece that we wanted, I'm gonna support this, but I also think, I'd like to see you come back as soon as you possibly can with even partially self-sustaining that account. Thank you, I yield.
Anything further on this? Tom?
Just a couple of curiosity questions, Ken. As far as the cafeteria furniture is concerned, I have a, I'm very curious, Mr. Chairman, the money that the Trade Wins Restaurant makes, is that applied to net school spending in any way, or is that just an extraneous number on its own? It's a number on its own?
Yeah, I'd say it just sits out in there, they replenish their own supplies with it.
Okay, so my question is...
Yeah, they just replenish the stuff they used, huh? They're not making a profit.
That's a profit number, then.
There's not much of a profit in that place.
It's not much of a profit. I'm thinking forward, I'm not on the building committee, so I haven't had a chance to select any of the details that are going into the high school as far as, like, the furniture is concerned, but you're talking about cafeteria furniture here, not restaurant furniture?
So this is cafeteria, and this is, so it's cafeteria receptus, so it's not only the table, it's also the trash recycle bins.
Yeah, it's the whole outfit.
The high-top tables.
It's the whole outfit to run a cafeteria.
Exactly, yes.
But has this level of thought been put into the new Trade Wins Restaurant as far as a design?
Yeah, that's all.
Commercial strength, heavy-duty, you know, something that we can get years out of but still looks good? We wanna draw the public in there. You know, we want the public to come to the school and eat lunch, or, you know, get some of the bakery products that the kids are making. You know, that highlights our school, that shows it off, and plus it gives them a chance to go in there and relax, in a relaxing atmosphere. I just wanna make sure that all of this stuff has integrity. You know, I know that this cafeteria stuff must. I've seen some of the new furniture going into the classrooms, and it's a diversity. There are some high desks, some low desks, chairs that rotate, all that kinda stuff. That's pretty cool. My concern on all of that is in structural integrity in the furniture itself, so that we could get years out of it, not just a couple of years out of it, before there's a new request to, like, you know, get new furniture again.
The furniture's cutting-edge, but proven, not right out of the, you know, right out of a particular design. It's been proven in other buildings.
So it's institutional furniture?
Yes.
But what about the Trade Wins? Can that be a bit more of a design function, or does it have to be so institutional?
It's already been, you know, it's designed out. The design team has already designed furniture, and those processes have been happening. Probably FFNE has been on the table for about a year and a half already.
All right, thanks, I yield.
Okay. Anything further? Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next item up is a discussion and vote to approve the four other public schools to serve as a member of the South Coast Educational Collaborative, as presented by Dr. Matthew Malone. Do I have a motion? A second?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second, Deb? Discussion on the...
No, I have a second in my hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought somebody was seconding you.
So you're looking for a motion? I make a motion.
You make the motion.
Second.
Mark's second. Discussion, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a few questions. Mr. Loes, can you pull up the chair, please? Thank you, Mr. Loes, I just had a few questions for you regarding the South Coast Education Collaborative, special ed students, and then the CEC helps us with us, particularly with some students in the district, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. What's the actual, what's the budget from the school department that we might, you know, in a ballpark figure, what we spend?
Right now, for the thirty-two students we currently have being served by South Coast, I think Kevin could probably confirm it better than I can, but I think it's a little bit over two million dollars.
Over two million? Okay, and it's about, it's thirty-two students right now?
Currently thirty-two, yep.
Okay. And the, right now, there's ten communities in the collaborative. We're not in it. My question is, as far as, maybe, I don't know if you can answer this question, but as far as the rate, how different is the rate if you are in the collaborative and if you're not in the collaborative?
There's a different rate typically for each program they have. There's the member rate, the non-member rate. When I was looking over the figures the other day, I think it fluctuates anywhere between twenty-five to thirty dollars a day approximately per program. It definitely varies from piece to piece due to the rates that are approved by OSD.
Okay. And right now, we're operating on the non-rate, not the rate that, we're not in the collaborative, so we have a different rate of the folks that are in the collaborative, correct?
Yep, we have the non-member rate.
Okay, all right. And as far as your concern, the collaborative's doing a very good job?
Yeah, I mean, they certainly, you know, they definitely provide a high level of service to our students. We've seen good parent satisfaction. They work and do a nice job with our very challenging students who are not able to necessarily serve in our district programs, and we've formed a good working relationship.
Okay. And as far as the amount of, I saw the superintendent's letter today to some of the, I think, the city council president, and as far as you saying, Mr. Superintendent, that we haven't been successful of getting into the collaborative, I'm just curious, when, why haven't we been successful that we haven't been in the collaborative? And is there any particular reason that we haven't been in there?
So historically, Fall River's never been part of this collaborative. We probably, at one point, we probably had fifty, sixty, seventy kids in the collaborative, but we were never a part of the collaborative. So I've been here four and a half years, we've built a relationship with them, we have a good relationship with them. Two years ago, we, well, maybe a year and a half ago, it was actually, Mr. School can remember, Corey, through visits, we were doing some visits, and we said the collaborative was doing some music therapy stuff, and we started getting more involved, and we said, hey, maybe we should join. So we met with them, we looked at their model. At the time, the requirements are still the same in terms of how you gotta, the members' boards have to vote, and our boards have to vote, and they had a governance structure that didn't have to be the superintendent serving on the collaborative committee. So we applied, but during that time, the superintendents that were on voted that they were gonna be a superintendent-only board, and we had Ann Duggan that was gonna represent us, so we were not approved at the end of the day. We've kept that relationship going. More districts have joined. Now, at that time, New Bedford wasn't a member, neither was Dartmouth, or a couple of the other ones, so now we got the whole South Coast. I've talked to the other colleagues, superintendents, everyone's like, yeah, we want you in, we want Fall River. I sent you guys a letter, we're ready to go. I talked with the executive director last week. There would be some cost savings to the district if we were members in terms of the tuitions, and if you vote to approve tonight, it will go to the next step of the process, which is essentially them going back out to their boards, each members' board to have to vote, and then it would come back to this committee when final, and you'd make a final decision.
But on December twelfth of two thousand nineteen, the collaborative was ready to vote for Westport and Bedford and Fall River. And the, I think the reason why they left us out was because you didn't wanna serve...
They didn't leave us out. The Department of Education refused the membership.
No, the collaborative voted no for Fall River.
Well, I don't know about that, but all I, well, I don't know. I'm just letting you know that, well, I'm telling you that the department didn't accept our recommendation.
Well, I'm telling you that the collaborative did. So my question is that because of that, we haven't been able to get, you know, the rate that Mr. Loes was talking about for the members of the collaborative. And also, it seems anyway, that there was a quarter, we had to pay a quarter of a million dollars because you didn't wanna attend the meetings.
Well, I don't think it's that simple there, Mr. Hart.
I think it is.
Well, I don't think it is, and you're talking about one fiscal year. So let's just be honest. You were on the school committee twenty years ago, why didn't we join then?
My only point is that I think that, you know, the reason why the collaborative, and I think the board of directors, which consists of all superintendents, attend those meetings is to, A, get the good, get the better rate for our students in the district, and also, B, not to have to pay a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar fine. So my point is that I think that the, what's that?
The fine?
Not fine, I'm sorry. I'm not a fine, I apologize, I apologize for that, not a fine. But the district has to pay two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for us not, for you not attending.
For twenty years, the district has paid the full freight here in Fall River. I wanna be honest about that, Mr. Hart. There was never a discussion about this district joining the collaborative prior to me coming here.
No, my point is, Mr. Superintendent, the cost to the district is two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for us not being part of the collaborative. That's all I'm saying. And I think that when, in two thousand nineteen, when they voted for it, voted for Westport and Bedford, they didn't vote for Fall River because we, the superintendent, you, wouldn't go to the meetings.
That's not true, Mr. Hart. The Department of Education, they must have voted after. The Department of Education refused our membership. We negotiated for months. I mean, I wanna, when did we start talking about it? In the fall? And we negotiated for months about what is, they approved that it would be Ann Duggan that serves on their board. I'm a big believer in all my time should be in the Fall River Public Schools. That was why I was not joining their board. Makes no decision not to join now, I understand. My fellow colleague superintendent in New Bedford joined, I have no issue with that. We had one fiscal year where we didn't get the benefit, but that's after twenty consecutive fiscal years, when you guys had really tough financial times. Last year, thank God, we didn't have that. So I didn't have to cut positions because I didn't serve on the board, but I will be honest with you, Mr. Hart.
No, I understand, but I'm just saying that the ten people that are part of the collaborative, the ten...
Ten now.
That are part of the collaborative now, even in two thousand nineteen, the ones that weren't part of it were Westport and Bedford.
Yep.
Those other communities attended the meetings.
Yep.
Superintendents.
If you read their bylaws, which I also sent you today, at the time, the bylaws said it could be a school committee member or a superintendent.
At the time, I'm just saying, I'll yield, but at the time, in December twelfth of two thousand nineteen, the collaborative board was ready to approve Westport and Bedford and Fall River. They chose, they decided on not Fall River because you said that you did not...
Again, you're confused, Mr. Hart. The Department of Ed had already sent a letter saying that they would not approve our membership.
But that's not true.
Thank you.
Mark?
Can I, through the chair, to my colleague, if this was an issue that you were aware of in December of two thousand nineteen, why are we now asking?
No, I was aware, no.
Well, you're referencing, hold on a second, Mr. Hart.
No, I got notes here.
You're referencing issues, and you said you knew they took a vote in two thousand nineteen. Matter of fact, you said to the superintendent they took a vote in two thousand nineteen. So if you knew they took a vote in two thousand nineteen, then why weren't you here at this committee asking questions of the superintendent then about why we weren't in the collaborative?
Mr. Costa, I found out today that they took the vote in two thousand nineteen. Today, I found that out.
Okay.
So I'm explaining it to everybody today.
Right. And it's an agenda item on...
I wasn't privy to it in two thousand nineteen.
Okay, okay. But it's an agenda item today because we're gonna join. So if there was information that you had about a vote that took place, or someone had it who gave it to you, why didn't they just pick up the phone and call members of the school committee, so we could address it then? I didn't know there was a vote in two thousand nineteen where we excluded.
I found out today at four o'clock.
I'm just saying that. You're gonna refer to votes in two thousand nineteen, and we haven't been a part of the collaborative? Well, if people knew that information, all you had to do was share it with the committee, we would have addressed it then.
I'm sharing it right now because I found out at four o'clock today.
I understand it, but your comments that that's not true, and that's not what happened, is indicative of someone who has information outside of just finding it out at four o'clock. So what I'm just saying, let's just be open about the discussions around it.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the letter that the superintendent wrote, that they've been unsuccessful, and there's reasons why they've been unsuccessful.
Correct, because we asked for an assistant superintendent to serve on the board, which was denied by not only their board members, but also by Desi. And that's, that was the reason why we didn't become a part of it. We've been having discussions, the superintendent and I...
This committee had already talked about this a year ago.
Mr. Corey and I, and probably others. I believe Mr. Agia was also keen on becoming part of this. It's on the agenda today, so that can happen. But if we wanna sit here and say, well, these votes were taking place, and why weren't we a part of it then? The reality is, it's been explained.
Right. But what hasn't been explained is the price tag of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So I just wanna make it clear to everybody.
Correct.
That's what the price tag, and that's what we've been paying, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for not being part of the collaborative.
And you're absolutely right, but it's...
Twenty years.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Okay, hold on, hold on. One at a time, guys, please.
Okay. So my, I understand there's a price tag for not being a part of it, but the district has made attempts to become a part of the board. I think that's what people are failing to miss here. We weren't falling asleep at the switch. We put an application in, we chose the assistant superintendent to sit on there. It got rejected. So it wasn't like we didn't try, it wasn't like, oh, just because he didn't wanna sit on it, he was putting a designee there, which this committee knew about and agreed to.
Are you done?
No, I'm not.
Now, hold on.
Okay, well, I got something to say.
All right, Paul, you're going next, hang on.
Absolutely. I'm just trying, all I'm trying to say, Paul, is that no one fell asleep at the switch here, okay? There was an application that was put forth, the committee knew that we were asking then Assistant Superintendent Duggan to serve on it, in lieu of the superintendent. The application went forward, it got denied. So we've been trying. So we can make this about, we lost that money, we did, but it's not for not attempting to become part of this board in some way, shape, or form. We've had a great relationship with them, we have students that have been attending the collaborative for many years, and so we're gonna put forth an application now the superintendent is gonna be a part of that because it's a requirement by their bylaws. And so I don't really see the issue, other than the fact that we tried to get in, we were denied, and the superintendent has put forth an application now, and Bedford apparently just got in, and talking to his colleagues, that's their rules, those are their bylaws, and they require it, and so he'll become a part of it when we vote tonight.
Okay, Paul.
I yield.
Last, last comment. The bylaws were uh the same in 2019. The bylaws said that the superintendent has to sit on the collaborative at the board, as a board member. He didn't do it. We didn't, we didn't get the, they, they, they denied it, and that, that's all I'm saying.
If I could just clarify as well.
Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, those actually weren't the bylaws at that time. At that time, we did research. It did say an assistant superintendent could sit or designate the superintendent. Uh, South Coast actually held an emergency board meeting and changed the bylaws that only a superintendent could sit on that, on the meeting at that point.
When, when was that, Mike? When was that changed?
Uh, it was around the same time uh when the vote and our application got thrown out.
Okay. Who's got something else? Anybody? Uh, Kev, Kev was next, then Tommy.
Yeah, so the real issue here is just, we have a job to do to hold people accountable. That's one of our duties. I agree with Mr. Hart. I think um, the real issue here is around, could the district have saved several hundred thousand dollars? Yes or no? The answer to that is clearly yes from all areas, that if we became a member, we would have saved several hundred thousand dollars. So my frustration with this entire process was that this all started, and I think it's important to, to, so people know where we're at and how hard it is to get some things done in this district. November of 2018, Dr. Ann Dargan, school committee member Tom Corey, proposed that we were gonna join the South Coast Collaborative in a meeting, subcommittee meeting. Gentlemen came, the president or the head of the organization gave an excellent presentation, all the benefits of why we should join. One of which would be that we could get a financial benefit if we joined. The minutes of that meeting specifically state that Dr. Heimbecker indicated the district would save over $250,000 per year in tuition costs if we were a member, obviously based on however many kids were at that time. Approximately 10% of the money would have been saved. We were conditionally accepted into the collaborative. They had to go through a process. So process goes for, goes forth. The school committee did what we had to do. We said, this is great. Like any school committee, any elected body's gonna say, we're gonna save $250,000 a year. No brainer, we're gonna do it, you know? That's what we did. Along the way, November of 2019 comes, we are told at the committee that an agreement was in place to have the assistant superintendent serve, or whoever that would be, or we can have a school committee member serve. This is in November of 2019. At that time, apparently, they said, no, it has to be a superintendent. So somebody in South Coast at that time, knowing that we wanted to save the $250,000 a year, stated to this district and the superintendent that you had to serve, the superintendent had to serve in December of 2019. So at that point, there's a decision to make. Does the superintendent choose to serve on the board so that we can save the money or not? It's as simple as that. Superintendent chose not to serve on the board. When we asked what had happened, we were, it was told that we needed to table the motion, Mr. Costa was chairing the meeting, of Mr. Corey being on it. It's incumbent, in my opinion, on the administrators in the district in order for us to save money. If you asked us to table Mr. Corey off the agenda, that it's on them to come back to us and say, the information we have is the superintendent has to serve, and we could still save the money. That never happened, and I think that's where the frustration is, is that from November of 2019, we are now in 2021. We could have been saving money to this district, but instead, we didn't. Fast forward to November of 2020, just three short months ago. Full school committee is asked to approve the contract of South Coast Collaborative of $1.7 million. I asked Mr. Loesch to come to the podium right here and ask the question directly, and anybody in the public or anywhere can go watch the meeting if they wanna choose to see if this is accurate. Superintendent Loesch said that we did not become a member. I asked for a better explanation like I would each and every time. Mr. Loesch was in the middle of it, and I said, I don't wanna put you on the spot. Superintendent said, I'll answer that question. I'm not serving on their board. That's what infuriated me, because he told us and the public that the reason why we're not getting that discount of $250,000 a year was because he's not sitting on a board. If you recall, the next comment was, have a subcommittee meeting. Okay, I made a motion to, for a subcommittee, to refer it to the subcommittee. Goes through. There we go. In January, because this is an urgent matter, because we need to get this process started so we can start saving money, I asked to have a subcommittee meeting before this meeting, so we could have hashed this out and get to the meeting. I'm told, no, we can't have a subcommittee meeting until the end of March because we got other busy stuff going on. We couldn't work schedules out. I send an email to every member of the committee asking that this agenda item be put on the full plate so we can actually get this done, to the superintendent, to all of us. We, I'm waiting on a Wednesday to figure out when we see the draft agenda, if this is gonna be on. So if it was all in play that this was what we really wanted to do as a administration, it would have been on the agenda on Wednesday, especially after it was suggested and asked to please put it on the agenda. Didn't go on the agenda. Kudos to Mayor Coogan, who I had a conversation with. He was gonna make it be on the gen, on the agenda. Cause he's the one that sets the agenda. So the reason why we're here today, which is the right vote, absolutely is the right vote, is for us to become a member, to save the money and use the resources together with them. So kudos to Mayor Coogan for getting this on the agenda. But it's disingenuous for the superintendent to sit here today and say, oh, we were gonna be doing this. There's one reason why we're here today, is because we pushed the envelope and he chose to not save the money because he didn't wanna serve on the board. That's the bottom line. There's no, there's no sugarcoating it. That's just the way it is. If you wanna go look at it, you can watch the tapes, you can see it. I'm not serving on the board, and it's because of that that this district is out a couple hundred thousand dollars. And that's the bottom line. We can all check it out. I think it's the right vote today. I appreciate the, Mr. Corey back in the day. I appreciate Ann Dargan back in the day. I appreciate Dr. Heimbecker coming in. I actually thought there was something else I was missing all, all along here. So I had to call Dr. Heimbecker myself a couple of weeks ago to ask him, is there, is there something I'm missing here on why we couldn't do it? And exactly what I told you is exactly what happened. If he would have chose to serve on the board, we would have saved the money. So going forward, we just need to make the best decisions based on what the information is, and we need to get accurate information. I think it's the right vote, and I'm gonna be supporting it. Thank you very much.
I'm gonna go to Superintendent Malone and then Josh.
Two pieces, just to correct revisionist history. It was agreed to that we would have another person serve on the board. That was agreed to by both parties. It fell apart. It was agreed to, so it wasn't like, no, we agreed to it. We negotiated. That happened. It got brought forward, board was changed, it fell. We missed the benefit of $200,000 for one fiscal year. Okay, let's not talk about the 20 years before, when you were on the board before and all that, that's fine. But let's also talk about the value of South Coast Collaborative. Do you recall a conversation you had with me when we toured the Stone School, when you were just reelected to the board, to this board? Do you recall a conversation we had about your experience?
Because that's what people do, so I'm not answering back and forth. I'm respectfully asking you to talk.
So when you were, I don't know when it was, but you were the assistant principal in CCONC for a period of time, and you're no longer there. Do you remember a conversation you had about the South Coast programs in CCONC? In, that they physically housed when I talked about, I'm gonna be bringing in more programs from South Coast into the Fall River Public Schools? Do you remember what you said to me?
It's not gonna be a back and forth.
No, it's not gonna be a back and forth.
I'm just, if you don't remember it, you told me that those programs weren't worth anything and they don't work in your school. I said, well, that's not true, and I've been working to build a relationship with South Coast since I got here, which we've done. Now, in terms of the membership, again, serving on a board, you pay me to work here. I wanna spend every single minute I have working to improve this district. Now, granted, but we've taken a look at this. I'll gladly serve on the board here. I actually put it in writing to you this past week. It was on the agenda for the March subcommittee meeting. So this, when you say they're lying that they weren't gonna talk about this and continue to explore, that's not true. We had it on the agenda. It was referred. We had all the information done. Outreach was actually made. The person that's the new deputy director is someone I worked with 30 years ago, who's a great friend. So this was gonna happen, so I don't want you to act as if Kevin Agia made this happen, because that's not true. That's not true. This is an effort of all of us over time, coming to the realization that it makes the most sense for the district to be part of. Now, also, at the same time, we also joined SMEC, which Mr. Corey serves on the committee there. He's our representative. There's a, you can have different kinds of boards. Their board is school committee members. So we've been looking at building and expanding partnerships to save the district dollars for years. Now, I just want you to know, I've been here for four and a half years. We've done that under my leadership here. When you were on the school committee before, there was no conversations about saving money and joining these organizations. Why didn't we join it then? Why didn't Meg serve on those things then? It wasn't important then. Now it's important. We get it. We're doing it. So it's kind of irrelevant to have an argument about something so simple that we're all in agreement that this makes sense. So let's do what makes sense for the district. I don't wanna fight about it. Do you wanna fight about it?
Okay, Matt, stop with the questions. Josh, please. You wanna go first, Kev? He, he had his hand up. I was trying to keep it in order.
Quite frankly, proper etiquette in a meeting is not to be aggressive with people, not to go back and forth with them. So I'm not responding to all the questions the superintendent just said. If I wanna ask my question, I'll raise my hand at the end after all my colleagues get to talk, and I'll raise my point. So thank you for the offer.
Just, so let's go Josh, then Tommy, then you.
Sure, thank you.
Right. So, I mean, it's a very good question why this hasn't been done for a long time. I'm happy we're doing it now. Like you say, we're all in agreement. I think everyone here is. It's great. I don't necessarily feel it's, I mean, the superintendent at the time, right, we tried to get somebody else designated to that position. If every collaborative, every place we pay tuition to said, we have a board, and if you serve on it, we're gonna save X amount of money. I mean, when would he ever be in the district? I understand this is the only one like that, and he's now agreed to go on it. I mean, it could have been a school committee member. You could have sat on it. Any one of us could have sat on it, right, to save the money, but we didn't. And at one point in time, it was a school committee member or a superintendent. I, I mean, I'm happy we're joining now. It's gonna be nice to save the money, but quite frankly, I don't think uh he shouldn't have to sit on every single board if they offer us a discount. In this case, I think it's great. Lot of money. With that, I yield.
Tommy, I think Kev.
Yes, uh, just, just for the record. I was, I was delegated to look into this matter. And going back, and I recall my first meeting with Dr. Heimbecker at South Coast, and it was very collegial. It was extremely warm and comfortable, and I felt like, wow, this could be a great thing. With former assistant superintendent Ann Dargan, uh, we rode up together and had a lengthy meeting with Dr. Heimbecker. And they totally entertained the idea that an assistant superintendent could be a delegate on the board. And that, we voted on that, and uh, they went through the process, which is why it came back denied. They must have changed their charter. I don't have the timeline on all of that. All I know is that we put a real good faith effort into joining the, joining the collaborative, which, by the way, we have 32 kids in there currently, and we've had 30 or so kids in there for the past several years, and that still represents a sizable savings to our district. Because we are getting services that our district could never provide these children, cause they provide some very, very excellent services. How do I know? Because I've been up there. I've seen their facility. I, Dr. Heimbecker walked me through it. I have forged a very good relationship with him, and he, I know that he would be very excited uh, with the advent of this letter, at, at the prospects of us joining the district. Now, as far as the other board is concerned, Southeastern Massachusetts Educational Collaborative, which uh is called SMEC, their charter allows for a school committee member to sit on their board. So it's the same level of business, but their charter just stipulates differently. And so for that, I say, we broke ice with South Coast Collaborative. We've created a very good relationship with them. Their, uh, this year has been an abomination because of COVID, but we brought their Drums Alive program into our schools for our special needs students, and it's been a really excellent success. So there's a lot of nuances to this that need to be understood. It's not just, you know, black and white. It's not that, it's not that. There's a lot of gray matter to this issue, and we've been working in the gray matter. And in the meantime, building up a very good relationship with them. With that, I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Kev, please.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to make a comment on how this went down? To give your opinion on what happened?
No, no, no. I, I do remember this, and um, I do remember at one time. Matter of fact, it's funny that the superintendent says that because a good friend of ours from way back in the day, Bill Malloy, I talked to him the other day about this issue, and he said he was on that board. But I wonder if at the time, they just wanted a representative and they didn't get a discount, because I don't think he said there was anything like that at the time. So he said he was on their board at one time, so I don't know. The other day, what happened was um, it was a matter of getting it on the agenda so we could get it uh, a vote tonight, not in March, and go forward. That's all I wanna do. I'm not looking to uh, I mean, whatever happened is in the rearview mirror. Uh, we, I hope it never happens again, and let's, let's get on with uh, the next item because we got work to do, and I wanna make sure we are, we accomplish the best we can. Was it a mistake? I think we should have joined back then, but let's go forward and join now.
My only comment was, just to clarify, um, related to my prior job in the collaborative. The conversation that the superintendent and I, and I had was whether we can duplicate a service that they have in one high school at our high schools. Instead of paying $70,000 for tuition, could we duplicate that service here? Basically, that's the conversation, and that's what I think we need to do separate from this vote. Is if we're, if we're looking at out-of-district placements that are doing very similar stuff that we can have here, we should be able to do it. I've researched this. I know we keep going back and forth about this stuff. Mr. Loesch submitted to the subcommittee a list of all the things that have, have been happening along the way. One of those in there was about us saving a couple hundred thousand dollars in joining the South Coast Collaborative. So at the end of the day, the bottom line is that from November of 2019, when it was told to us that we the superintendent needed to serve, we should have saved the $250,000. I think everybody's in agreement. At that point, let's move on, let's vote on this and do what we need to do. I think we need to work on getting those, whether we pay a big tuition or less tuition, get more people in the district to save money. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Okay, Tommy, let's go.
I'll be brief. Um, I know that Assistant Superintendent Loesch presented to us a three-year strategic plan last year that looked really, really awesome, and I know that his plate is full. And he, he inherited a special ed department in Fall River that was in need of improvement, and he has a full plate. He's an open book. Every time I've asked him for some request or some knowledge, he's provided it. He stares me in the right direction. He stirred me to the SMEC board. That being said, the relationship I struck up with Dr. Heimbecker in the South Coast Collaborative has afforded our school district to use their expertise. And they send trainers in for our paraprofessionals every year now. So now there are trainings going on for our paraprofessionals through their, through their collaborative. And that's just one of the benefits of the relationship building that has been going on for the past couple of years. I yield.
Okay, guys, let, let's vote on this one. Uh, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 11.9 is a discussion and vote to approve the second quarter transfer as presented by Kevin Almeida. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in second. Any questions or concerns about the transfer with Mr. Almeida? Hearing none? I think we should vote. Go ahead, Deb.
Ms. Draga?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Lareve? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Might as well stay there, Kev. She said yes.
Okay.
There's a discussion and vote to approve the year-to-date budget report as presented by Kevin Almeida.
Oh, still proof.
Second.
I have a motion in second. Any discussion or not? Kev?
The, um, I see the piece on the healthcare is still looking healthy on our, on our end.
Yes.
What is the timeline for the uh, the one from, the carryover from last year? Is that, are we expecting a letter in March?
So I, I haven't, I, I'm actually gonna reach out to the state to find out where the letter is so that we can get ahead of it. But typically, it's around this timeframe. Normally, we get it just before February vacation around that time.
And that's um, that'll be due now, like they'll, so the ci, the city will have to fund a million dollars more now, or is that?
They'll send, they'll send us the letter requesting us to work with the city to get the money to us so that we can spend it in this current year.
Or carry it over on the, on the numbers for next year?
Or, or that.
Theoretically.
Yes.
The reason why I ask that question is the new money that comes in from COVID, is that percentage of that or something? Can, do you know about the, how much we can use to help the city pay the, is that included in it?
The ESR two money is what you're referring to. So that money, the, the legislation hasn't, hasn't passed. It's all part of the governor's budget, so it's. hasn't passed, it's all part of the governor's budget, so, it's contingent upon that all fully going through. So until that is all finalized, I'm not really going to speak to it, but it does, what the governor's budget did do was, it allows, it gives this, it gives us the flexibility to work with the city so that they can fund a portion of the increase into the local required contribution from one year to the next. And so, it's projected to be just over a million dollars, I believe, I don't have the exact number in my head right now, but potential to fund part of that through the grant. But that is also contingent upon the budget passing the way it is.
And this could carry over, which would make that pie just a little bigger?
Potentially.
Theoretically.
Yes.
Yeah, that's really the only question I had, was around the health care, where we're at with it, because we need to work together to make sure it's done, but at the same time, we've got to meet 100% of net school spending, so as long as we're on track with that. Thank you, I yield.
Anything further? Okay, let's vote, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corry?
Yes.
Ms. Larevy?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.1, we have a number of retirements, resignations, appointments.
Motion to accept the place on file, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Those are for your reading, at your convenience, can we have a roll call on that, Deb, please?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corry?
Yep.
Ms. Larevy?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Sorry, guys. Okay, next item up is new business, do we have any new business to come before the committee tonight? Hearing none?
Question?
Kev, go ahead.
Just, I think the next item is the executive session, request for executive session list, and I'd like to personally request that we make sure that we read into the record relative to Administr, Fall River Administrators Union. I have an issue that I'd like to discuss, and it's on the list here, but I want to make sure that it gets read.
We need a motion first, Mr. Chairman.
So, go ahead, so you're making a motion that's added into executive session minutes?
No, it's on here, it's already on the agenda, but I just wanted to turn you aside to make sure that it was happening, thank you.
Next item up is a request to go into executive session. Do I hear a motion in a second?
So moved.
I hear a second?
Second, yeah, second, I got a motion, a second.
Any discussion on that? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
No.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
No.
Mr. Corry?
No.
Ms. Larevy?
No.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Question?
Yeah, Ms. Agia?
Turn you aside, do you have anything that we need to go in for, or is that?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn is on the table, it's been seconded.
Well, why, why are we going into executive session?
Why not?
But why aren't we?
It's a motion on the table to adjourn, Mr. Chairman, been seconded.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, I got to make sure it's in order.
Point of order?
Go ahead.
Why are we not going into executive session?
I didn't, I voted yes, I don't know why, when I pointed, I didn't have the votes, just got to go the other way.
We go into executive session every meeting.
I know, we're not getting an answer, that's their prerogative. I'll entertain, any further on that?
So, point of order.
Go ahead.
When, when has, I've never, I've never seen where, we've never gone into executive session.
Maybe you can ask the attorney, I don't.
Mr.?
Mr. Chairman, there's a motion on the table to adjourn.
I might need a point of order.
Right, and it's been addressed, there was a vote.
Mr. Assad, has this ever happened before?
Paul, Paul, that's enough, we'll go on, you can talk to him after the meeting. Motion to adjourn, do I have a second on that?
I second it.
You seconded it?
On a motion to adjourn.
Go ahead, on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. Agia?
I'm speaking on the motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
So I think when we look at our duties as a school committee, when we stifle information and just try to play games, I think it's inappropriate, so I'm going to be opposed to the motion to adjourn, I don't think I've ever proposed a motion to adjourn in my life. We do have business to go on, we have an agenda with a whole bunch of items on it related to information, and quite frankly, I think it's disgusting that we're not going into executive session, and I'll be voting against it. Thank you.
Anything further on motion to adjourn? Deb, call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes, no, no.
Mr. Costa? Mr. Hark?
No.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corry?
Yes.
Ms. Larevy?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
What did that end up, Deb?
It's 3-3.
So we don't adjourn, or do we go, Bruce?
Make a motion for new business?
Go ahead.
Yes, I'm motion to adjourn.
Motion passes.
Is that okay? We move to the next one? I know, Bruce, hold on, hold on, let's make sure we're legal.
Point of parliamentary procedure.
Correct, go ahead.
When a, when a sitting school committee member gets up and leaves, they can't be just pop them back in and vote whenever they want. The vote was 3 to 3, it didn't pass, so therefore, we're back open, and at this present time, I'd like to make a discussion on the new business.
Is that legal, Bruce? Tell me.
I have every right to.
Hold on, go ahead, Bruce, give us the legal opinion, I know it's anything illegal.
First of all, it's, it's not really a legal issue, it's a parliamentary issue.
Is it a parliamentary issue?
And unless, I guess the, the issue becomes, was the vote done and moved on to a different issue, and if not, and if the vote was taken, I would think that would be legitimate in terms of the, the seventh vote that was, that came in through Mr. Costa. But again, it's, it's a parliamentary issue, as opposed to a, a legal issue.
Okay, so parliamentary, you counted the votes, Deb, correct, and you told us it was what?
3-3.
3-3. Then Kevin made a new motion, correct, because we didn't adjourn, and that's where we sit now.
What was the motion?
Motion for a five-minute recess.
Wait a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Any discussion on that?
I think it's only due, the reason why I want to call a recess is so that we can address any issues, because otherwise, we're just going to be sitting here and people will be.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
No.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
No.
Mr. Corry?
No.
Ms. Larevy?
No.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Motion to reconsider, motion to adjourn. Second.
A point of order from the.
Go ahead.
Through the chair to Mr. Assad, it was a 3-3 vote, and the vice chairman had walked out, and he came back, and he came into the room and said, yeah. And Paul, you said that as far as technical wise, parliamentary?
We're past that, Paul, we're way past that, buddy, yeah. We're way past that, Paul, we're already on to the next thing, that, that's done.
I just wanted to clarify.
No, I know, you're right, but it's done.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to clarify.
So where are we now?
There's a motion on the table to reconsider to adjourn, Mr. Costa made the motion, Mr. Hudson.
Any discussion on that second motion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
May I ask any of the members that are looking to reconsider if they could explain
Hearing none?
Move the question.
Move the question, anybody got anything to say? Deb?
Mr. Agia?
Are we voting on move the question, or are we voting on the opposite?
Voting on the motion to adjourn.
So he must have withdrawn his move, request to move the question.
I just called for a roll.
I moved the question.
Just call for a roll, that's all.
So you're withdrawing your move?
No, that's not correct. I called for a roll.
Where are we now, Bruce, parliamentary wise?
I can help you, I was calling for a roll. I didn't remove, I didn't move to change my motion to amend.
The statement was, I moved the question. That's a vote that needs a second, and you take a vote, that's all I'm saying. Instead of just blurring things out, you say it, or you.
Roll call.
Roll call on move the question, go ahead, Deb.
It was a seconded, is my question.
I just seconded it.
Josh seconded it. Josh seconded it.
No.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hark?
No.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corry?
Yes.
Ms. Larevy?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Now the motion to adjourn, Deb?
It's to reconsider to, to adjourn.
Okay, any discussion on that? Go ahead.
Mr. Agia?
No.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hark?
No.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corry?
Yes.
Ms. Larevy?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
No.
Motion passes.
Night.
Are we going to take a motion to adjourn?
That's the way we just voted on.